Good evening, everyone, to this workshop committee meetings meeting via Zoom for the Waterbury Board of Education. Today is March 4th, and welcome aboard. We have many people here tonight. First agenda item is a silent prayer. Doctor, do you have any words that you want to interject?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go for a silent prayer. Thank you. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, how would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty, justice, and fairness for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Our next agenda item is public speaking. Carrie, do you have a list of who's standing by?
Our first public speaker is Robbie Goodrich. Please state your name and address for the record. Bevy, we're connected, right? Robbie Goodrich?
Oh, because I'm muted.
Yeah, I'm still on the call.
No, 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 this is another call. Actually, Carol Maglio, but I can hear you. I don't know where they went.
Okay, then we will take Carol.
They have botched this every week, and they can hear us right now, but we can't talk.
Okay, well, just so that you know, I can hear you. I'm going back on mute.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Robbie Goodrich?
Robbie Goodrich?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello? Hello?
Robbie, can you hear us?
Earth, the Waterbury Board of Education.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Mr. President, we really need to get this fixed. It's every week. I agree with that.
Hello?
Hello?
Earth, to the Waterbury Board of Education.
It's not muted on my end or nothing. So I'm not sure.
Is it star six?
They can't hear you because I have the meeting on.
I know, I have it, I have it too. It's just terrible. They can hear us.
Rob, go ahead.
Hello?
Rob, can you hear us?
We can hear you, Rob.
Wonderful. My name is Robbie Goodrich. I live at 14 St. Rod Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06704. I'm the Executive Director of Radical Advocates for Cross-Culture Education. We fight for racial justice in our schools. I'm going to address the board members tonight, and then I'm going to address the school staff and the police department. Now, members of this board, specifically President Pragano, I represent over 100 members that came to speak at this meeting over a month ago. And I'm asking you to initiate, on behalf of those 100-plus people, the process of censoring board members responsible for this board's noncompliance of Public Act 15-165, and that concerning the MOUs with police departments. I think you need to start holding yourselves accountable, and this is a process that will ensure that at least the public knows that you're doing something about a major misstep that this board made. Second, I'm speaking directly again to you, President Pragano, to hold yourself accountable for the promise that you made regarding having deeper and more structured conversations with the community about policing in our schools. Still have not received any feedback from you directly or a schedule of when these meetings would take place. It's disheartening and it's disempowering to have us to wait this long after we've put the effort forth to express our concerns to this board. You are the leader of the board. We do expect a response from you. Next, I'd like to address the school staff, and particularly Superintendent Ruffin and your staff regarding the surveys or the survey science that you're using to put forth in terms of surveying students and community members about policing in schools. The recent one-question survey that you put out to the public is a slap in the face to anybody that looks at social science or the ability to measure beliefs and perceptions about a particular topic. By the way, we have a tool that's already in place that we've been using in the community that we'd like to share with you if you'd like to engage in a real scientific process around engaging people's perceptions and beliefs. Now, finally, I'm going to address Chief Spagnolo and the police officer who actually went about policing where the speakers were saying that they lived during the last Board of Education meeting workshop. This is a very concerning matter where that officer was tracking where it is that people were saying that they lived, so that possibly that he could intimidate or voice his concern about people coming to speak against police in schools. Now, this isn't the first time that this has actually happened, but the first time that we've seen this particular officer do something like this. Now, this is an egregious act, and it's the reason why people gave my address as to where they were living, because they're afraid of the police seeking retribution when they speak out against them. Now, with Chief Spagnolo, if you're going to hold your officers accountable for interacting with the community appropriately, you need to address this officer for doing that and explain to him how inappropriate it is. Now, we expect a public apology, but also some sort of sanction against this officer for sort of breaching this trust that he's supposed to have as someone who's supposed to be protecting the public, not encouraging the surveillance of people who come to speak at Board of Education meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Carol Maglio. Please state your name and address for the record. Bevy, you want to try talking to them? It seemed that they heard you.
Carol?
Yep, I'm here.
Tell us you can go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Carol Maglio, 145 Devonwood Drive. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can go. You can go.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, first off, I want to say good evening to Superintendent Ruffin and the board members. I want to say thank you especially for getting our students back into school full-time. I think my kindergarten student will benefit immensely from being back all day. Next, I would like to just express my concern with taking resource officers out of our schools. I feel that the SROs being in school foster positive interactions with law enforcement, and that is, that is important. At the, I'm going to give you a little bit of my experiences at Westside. Both of my boys attended Westside Middle School where there was a resource officer stationed there every day on multiple occasions when I was at the school. I personally watched the students interact with the resource officer. Their interactions were all positive, and I could see the level of respect that both the students and the officer had for one another. I additionally think it's important to keep the officers in the school for safety. As a parent, knowing that the resource officers are at the school, I feel that my children are safe. We have been, Waterbury has been extremely fortunate to date that we can say that our schools are safe and nothing bad has ever happened in them. Knowing that the resource officer is there eases, eases my mind every day that I go to work. I have two boys that are in high school, and I sat down with them and I asked them how they felt about having a resource officer in school. Both of them said that their experiences at Westside with the officer were all positive, and they were happy to have the officer in school. I don't believe that there's a resource officer station at Career where my middle child attends, but my Kennedy student has one and says that it's important to keep the officer there. There's fights all the time, and it's important to keep the officer there to keep everyone safe, including the teachers, because oftentimes the teachers are unable to break up the fights that happen. So I wanted to share that about officers. I also wanted to ask, not ask, but mention that graduation is fast approaching. I know that last year we didn't have graduations and proms, but I think it's important to talk about it now and figure out what we can do to recognize our seniors. Also, I'd like to address the fact that parents in Waterbury are not allowed to attend sporting events. Currently, I have a senior swimmer who is in his last year, who I do thank the city for getting the meets up on Zoom, but as a parent, I, I'm one of very few people who attend meets all the time. There's less than four spectators at each of the swim meets for Kennedy. It is his last season with the governor opening up some of the restrictions, and seeing that our surrounding NVL towns are allowing two parents in to each, each meet or event, I think it's important for Waterbury to follow suit as well. And that's it. I thank you guys for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have.
That's all we have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is item number one. As, as we talked about the last time about these school resource officers, Dr. Ruffin and I had spoke briefly about starting the discussion, and her suggestion was to bring in an update on Waterbury Voices, that she is a co-chair along with Chief Fernando Spagnola. So, Dr. Ruffin, if you want to tee it up, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioners. Good evening tonight. We are going to give the board an overview of Waterbury Voices and also acknowledge that we have staff members as well as two of our board members, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Brown, who attend the Waterbury Voices, not as active participants, but rather as observers of the entire process and most frequently will also engage in some of the conversations. Waterbury Voices was created to bring together a roundtable of interested and vested stakeholders throughout the city of Waterbury with diverse voices that could not only give us some feedback on what is important for our youth in Waterbury, but that would bring diverse ideas and possible solutions so that Chief and I collectively could be able to work with them and with our organizations to best meet the needs of Waterbury. It was created to have a sizable group of diverse voices at the table, to be able to have a workable group, and when I say workable group, a committee of 50 or 60 would not have given us an opportunity to really hear people articulate. And so while this group was created, we found that repeatedly the members have been committed to attending the meetings. They've been very active in participating, and they've been problem solvers to some of the critical issues that Chief and I see across the city and very specifically to address the youth in Waterbury. So while not everybody is a physical presence on this group, everybody's voice could be heard through this group because they speak very candidly to all of us in this roundtable about real issues in real time in real Waterbury. And so I'm very pleased to be a part of this, and, and I'm going to let Chief, you know, join in, and then we have some information that we can share with you. I, I also want to be very clear. Very beginning of Waterbury Voices, we did begin addressing through a very important tool that we use called Thought Exchange by asking all of the members and asking others to participate in telling us what are the most important things that we can do individually and collectively to help to build a school-community culture that promotes safety, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. During that particular thought exchange, over 280 participants logged on and engaged in meaningful dialogue and offered more than 156 thoughts relative to not only the safety, but identifying it in terms of resource officers, in terms of school counseling, in turn of parental engagement, and all of those thoughts, thought exchanges were shared with our Waterbury Voices, and we continue to use that information as well as other surveys and other information to guide our conversations and our actions in Waterbury. It was Chief and I collectively wanted a group of people that could help problem solve, not just bring problems, but to really help solve some of the critical issues that, quite honestly, have been in Waterbury for many years. And we believe that the group that's surrounding that roundtable bring in their own personal ideas, but they are very clear about bringing in ideas that they're receiving from the community as well. Very pleased that the student voice is on this committee, and, and the students are vocal, and they are actively taking part, not only in just occasionally speaking up, but they've actually been engaged in the conversation and have brought in new and refreshing ideas and thoughts about how we need to move Waterbury forward. I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to let Chief say a few words, and then we can go on further to, to give an update about Waterbury Voices, and much more than an update, because it's an ongoing meeting, and it's an ongoing committed, commitment by the people who chose to be at this table to tackle some really tough issues. Chief?
Dr. Ruffin, thank you, and to the, to the commission, to the board, thank you so much for this opportunity to come here and, and speak this evening about this, this great idea that Dr. Ruffin approached me about several, several months ago, the Waterbury Voices, in, in an effort to gain communication and transparency and create relationships with members of our community to have an understanding of what their needs are when it comes to police and the education system that serves them. You know, as the doctor said, there's several people that represent what we feel is a very strong cross-section of, of folks in this city, and it's not, they're not individualistic. They're, they're representing, you know, their, their cultures, their, their, their folks from their neighborhoods, and they're clear when they bring information to, to the table that this is what they're hearing. The student body is represented well. I think government is, is, is represented or interested in the sense that, you know, there are board commissioners and other government officials that, that regularly attend these meetings. And, you know, the commitment to me has been incredible. I mean, this has been going on now since October, and it's the same group of people on a monthly basis that, that, that tune in for two hours. And, you know, it's really a constructive, positive forum. You know, there, there's not folks there that are looking to censor decisions that were made or, or, you know, government or police or the education system for, for decisions that they may not agree with. There's, there's conversations in earnest about, about some decisions that were made and about the direction that the police, SROs, and, and the Board of Education is, is going in as far as serving the student population. And there's been a lot of great work that's come out of this. There's been a lot of relationships that have been formed out of this. I think that there's a much stronger relationship today than ever before Waterbury Voices began between education, police, DCF, and Wellmore. And I think that, you know, there's an understanding, and, and the doc beats this drum consistently, not only at Waterbury Voices, but every time I talk to her about, you know, the social-emotional well-being of the students in our community and the impacts, not only that, that police could have on them, and we recognize that, but, you know, also what we've gone through in this pandemic. And, you know, I think we're doing great work as partners to service our children that attend, tend this education district. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to having some further discussions.
Thank you, Chief Spagnolo. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yes, in addition to the, the thought exchange, we take every conversation, every meeting that we have with our Waterbury Voices, and we try to make it applicable to real-life problem-solving in Waterbury Public Schools. And so we, we, we take that. We heard loud and clear that the social and emotional support's not just in saying we need social and emotional support. The, the roundtable talked about specific duties and responsibilities, clarity of job descriptions, the utilization of counselors and social workers in schools, programs, but not just programs, but so what's the efficacy of this program? How do you measure it? Do you know if it's successful? And, and so that, that keeps everyone focused on not just the program, but the effect that it's having on our youth, you know, after-school activities for students. You know, students don't just come to school. There has to be a life afterwards, and are we providing the infrastructure that will allow them to be able to grow and to be nurtured in opportunities beyond just the traditional school day? And, and, and various diverse groups, languages, as well as religion, as well as just different ways of thinking, racial discussions, discussions about equity, discussions about not only the diversity of the school district, but the provisions that are made as a result of that, multiple language translations to be able to best meet the needs of our entire community. And so we have taken many of the, the dialogue, and we've been able to apply some of that into some of the work that Waterbury Public Schools was either already doing or perhaps had not done fully, and certainly the communication piece. Does anybody know that this is getting done? And we found that, that, that communication piece and being able to assure that we're not just doing it, but people know that we're doing it was a big issue, continues to be. What the Waterbury Voices has assisted us in being able to do, they're also a conduit to be able to get that information to a larger network, and that has been helpful. It's not the end. We continue to meet. We will continue to meet. The Waterbury Voices is not going to go away. I see Waterbury Voices playing a critical part in helping us to evaluate what we're doing in the district, not only in our strategic plan, but also as we continue to reimagine education. Yes, we do surveys, and no surveys do not have to be long to answer a question that's really prevalent in the community. You can do a one-question survey if the only thing you're asking for is to be able to give you input that you need to make critical decisions. Surveys do not have to be long in order to give the board information that they need. They just need to ask what the board is asking for. And so when we did a survey, we, we weren't elaborating on survey. The questions that we've been getting, both from, you know, the board and from community members, is, you know, the importance of SROs in school, or how they're valued in school, or if they're not valued in school, or do people think that we don't need them? So we did ask that question, and if I had to do it all over again, I would have done it a long time ago. And so the question was, do you support the presence of school resource offices in our schools? We asked in, in multiple languages. The responses that we've received so far, we've received 2,146 responses as of this afternoon, and the survey's not closed. And of those 2,146 responses, 85.1% says yes, they support school resource officers in schools. 7.5% no, they do not support school resource officers in schools. And a smaller percentage says they are unsure. And so as of today, with 2,146 responses, I share with the board the information that has been gathered regarding that question that everybody wanted to talk about. Having said that, I could elaborate on, on, on Waterbury Voices, Chief and I could too, because we're very passionate about it, and we appreciate all of the members who serve on Waterbury Voices, their commitment for showing up at every meeting and contributing to the conversation. But at this point, it's a 10-minute presentation, so I will close there because I'm certain the board would want to either ask questions or perhaps have conversations among themselves.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, and thank you, Chief Spagnolo. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Anne Sweeney, I see your hand raised. You're muted.
Thank you, President Pragano. Chief Spagnolo, would you be willing to answer a question that has come up a couple of times? How are resource officers chosen, and what kind of training do they require to become school resources, officers?
So, school resource officers are chosen by a selection process. First thing we do if there's an opening, we meet frequently with, with school staff, the administration staff, especially in the summer when we're, we're gearing up for school resource officers to head back to school for, for the new school year. And if we do have an opening, we, we post that position and we ask for resumes. We ask for officers who have an interest in that position to, you know, provide a resume and provide, you know, a detailed statement on why they want to be a school resource officer. And you would be amazed at some of the folks we have working at the police department that have an educational background, that were involved in teaching or early childhood care prior to becoming police officers, that, that have a strong interest in, in working with children and working with the education system. I would, I would have to think, but for one second, but I am almost certain all of our school resource officers are products of the Waterbury Education District. You know, we, we are also mindful in making sure that our school resource officers mirror the population that attends our schools. We feel and believe that it's important that, that the children that we're serving, you know, have, have a, a person that, that they can relate to and that looks like them and that they may be willing to communicate and connect with more so. So as far as training, there's ongoing training that's provided at a state and federal level regarding school resource officers. We do send all our school resource officers to mentor training, because I feel, and so as well as the superintendent, that it's extremely important that, that relationships, you know, are, are of the utmost priority of these school resource officers for the kids in these schools. So, you know, by inherently, just by their job, they are mentoring children each and every day. So, you know, we provide that, that training opportunity for them as well. And many, actually all of these school resource officers during the summer months work in workforce investment programs where we have our kids from the Waterbury School District that, that are engaged in summer activities as one-on-one mentors, especially for the kids that, that really either ask for it or that we feel and working with other agencies such as DCF and Juvenile Probation could really use that, that one-on-one mentoring opportunity.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next person is Commissioner Tom Van Stone. Did I see your hand wave?
You did, Mr. President. Thank you, and through you. Chief, I just want to let you know, you could not have any more support than 100% of mine for the resource officers. I have spoken to many, many of your friends, and their role is so vital to probably the majority, the silent majority, that appreciates someone to talk to after being bullied and, and many other reasons, special ed kids, et cetera, and just the charity they do that I, I spoke about in a previous meeting. Your officers are excellent. They're doing a great job, and I, and I truly feel their position where I've seen no
where I've seen no evidence of true negative effects, and I have spoken to parents with true positive effects. 100% my backing. I really hope this is a program that stays with us, and I really feel they provide a vital role to our education process. So kudos to your officers. They are truly doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Chief, did you want to say something?
I just was thanking the commissioner, and listen, if there are no more questions, I thank you all, and, you know, we appreciate the support. And, you know, we are here to make sure that we get it right. You know, we are here to be held accountable by this board, to be held accountable to the community that we serve. And in this particular case, that would be the children in this community that attend the school district. So, you know, we would never hesitate to be here and answer any questions, and we are certainly open for any comments or suggestions or opportunities that anyone may have.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Commissioner Karen Harvey, is that you waving your hand?
That's me. Thank you. Thank you, President Pagano. Chief, how you doing? It's good to see you.
You too.
Hope you are well. But first of all, let me just address, there's few things I want to address, but let me just address the issue of the Waterbury Voices. I truly enjoy always listening to, you know, our community as it relates to our Waterbury Public Schools. So I really, really enjoy that. I think I missed the last meeting because I got my shot, and I was not in the mood to talk. So I was a little grumpy, but anyway. But I really, really appreciate that. Having said that, we, two weeks ago or so, had the opportunity, we had over approximately 84 emails sent to myself, President Pagano, and our secretary, Carrie Swain. And we also had roughly 25 people who spoke. There were 33 that signed up, but we had technical difficulties. So 25 of them had the opportunity to speak. And the reason why I'm mentioning this, Chief, is because, you know, we have to make sure that we're transparent. And, you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but there is that fraction that is in disagreement with what we're talking about here. All right? And they are also part of the community. We made an agreement, not an agreement, just a promise to address that, particularly not you, Chief, but at the board meeting, that we would address this issue. Now, at the time, it was when we were approving the MOU. So we need to allow for that discussion. That's an opportunity for this board to have a bigger community conversation. Now, we, kudos to you with, towards the latter part of 2019, Dr. Ruffin, the mayor, you know, being on WATR and opening up that discussion. That was great. But there is still a conversation that needs to be had. And we say we're transparent. So we have to be open to, again, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but we have to be open to those who don't agree with what we're saying. Now, those 84 emails and those 25 roughly, folks that spoke, also included students. All right? So we have to look at this opportunity to open that conversation, that bigger conversation with our community. So I'm looking at, again, we have the voices, full of respect what's being done there. Those were really, really candid conversations. But we have this fraction here that want to have that community conversation as well. So I am looking at proposing that we have that. A, you know, it may be a little bit uncomfortable, but some things, you know, we have to have that are uncomfortable. As long as it's respectful, we need to have those conversations. So I'm mentioning that with the proposal of a, maybe a special meeting, maybe, you know, I don't know how exactly we'd work that out, a task force or something to address the concerns of those 84, those 84 folks that sent those emails in and those 30-some-odd people that wanted to address us, you know, at our board meeting. So, you know, Chief, if you want to respond to that, fine, but that's what I'm pushing for.
Commissioner, I, you know, I respect your position. I've never seen these emails that you speak of. I did not attend that board meeting. We had representatives that were there. They did report back to me. You know, my door is open. I have many, many members of this community that walk through this door. I'm willing to meet people anywhere to discuss whatever matters they'd like to discuss in a comfortable setting for them. You know, I am very open to listening to the issues that people may have with policing in our community and things that are within my control. So, you know, as far as that's concerned, if there's a group of 84 people or there's one representative to a group of 84 people, I would be happy to meet, you know, with that person or that group and listen to what they have to say and, you know, take it from there. You know, other than that, I don't, you know, we haven't gotten any complaints. We have a very robust complaint system here at the Police Department. You know, as the leader of this department, you know, I meet every Tuesday with my executive team, and we follow up and look at every single complaint that comes into this Police Department. And we will accept the complaint on a napkin, via email, via voicemail, via text, via social media. It really doesn't matter. It doesn't need to be notarized. And we have no complaints. There are no complaints about our school resource officers. Frankly, we have limited complaints about the work that our officers are doing. But we have zero complaints about any issues that are going on in the school. So, you know, if there's someone that wants to come forward, there are plenty of avenues to do that. They could reach out to me directly. They could reach out to my office. The complaint could come through you or, you know, another person. I have very strong relationships with many nonprofit organizations that represent, you know, different racial groups within this city, you know, Hispanic Coalition, the NAACP, you know, the Albanian community, the Ecuadorian community, many communities. And they could use those surrogates to bring complaints to our attention. We just haven't heard it. So, you know, if these folks are out there and they have concerns that they want to express, I'm here. And really, you know, you don't have to like me or the police, but you can trust me, and you'll get a fair shake. I will listen to what you have to say.
Okay, and Chief, thank you. And I respect too what you are doing. These folks, because we always have that opportunity to, that we give the public, you know, as it being a public board, to address us. And that's how they addressed us. It was through our meeting. I can get you the date of the meeting so that you can, you know, perhaps, you know, in your spare time, and I say that, I know you don't have any spare time, to listen to what the concerns were. I don't know if I would call them complaints as much as I would call them concerns that these 84 emails that we received and these folks that spoke at our meeting. I mean, that's public, because we're a public, you know, board, we have to allow that, you know, opportunity for folks to speak, just like we did tonight. But again, I'm going to push for that type of meeting to take place. And, you know, let's sit at the table. Let's give everyone, you know, the opportunity to address it. Maybe a Zoom meeting or something like that. I also would like to include the superintendent on this because she was there also when we had this meeting. And let's address it and, you know, pretty much take it from there. But it is still, again, it's the MOU that, you know, there were some things that they wanted to speak about and had some suggestions. And I understand there are two former students from the Waterbury Public Schools that would like to make a presentation. So I'd like to set that up and with you and Superintendent Ruffin. And, you know, let's just address this issue. Again, it's a bigger opportunity for a community conversation. So that's where I stand with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pagano. Chief Spagnolo, how are you? My question to you, if you can, I don't know if you would know this or not, but I know that a little, probably it's been a little while now that Helen Taylor had gone to the Police Department to do, like, training with the officers about autism. So I'm wondering if some of the resource officers, if they had additional training such as the CIT training. I think it's the Crisis Intervention Team. I don't think it's mandatory for the police officer. I think it's something that's, that it's something that they choose if they wanted to take additional training or even like the NAMI. So I was just curious because I think it's important that the school resource officers have these additional trainings, especially with the variety of students and the diverse students that we have at our school. So would you happen to know, based, you know, off of some of their resumes, if you know if these officers have had those trainings?
Yes, 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 and yes. We train all of our officers in CIT. You know, we are one of the few police departments, maybe the only police department in the state of Connecticut that has crisis intervention, you know, licensed behavioral health workers that actually work side by side with our police officers 16 hours a day. And they respond to calls that involve people that are in crisis, you know, with behavioral health issues or mental health issues. And we've seen wonderful things happen from those folks responding to those calls for us. You know, oftentimes, relationships are already formed so they can really connect people with care and get that police law enforcement component out of the way and move on to trying to help a person that's in crisis. So, and all our officers are CIT-trained. And you're right, Helen Taylor does work with us, but it has not been a long time since she's been here. She works with all the new recruits. She comes to each and every new police academy with the cadets and talks about autism and folks with special needs and what is best for them when interacting with them. And then she comes to our recertification training as well, along with many other community members, including representatives from NAMI. You know, another component that we've added recently is de-escalation training. So, you know, we are bringing in outside folks, non-law enforcement folks that are talking to our officers and teaching our officers about de-escalation techniques with people, you know, prior to it getting to a situation where it's out of control and, you know, some sort of physical action needs to take place. So these are things that we're really been focusing on. You know, one of the things that I'm extremely proud of is that, you know, the state of Connecticut only requires police officers to attend 60 hours of training every three years to become recertified as a police officer. We have changed that format, and we send our police officers, each and every police officer, to recertification police school 40 hours a week every year. And one of the components, one day is spent with folks from the community coming in, representing different religious entities from our community, you know, nonprofit organizations that represent ethnicities and races in our community, and talking to our police officers, not only our new police officers, but our police officers, especially our veteran police officers, so as an understanding on what these communities expect and what culture and what standards that these folks have in this community. So the police officers can have a better opportunity to communicate with them, especially in a time of crisis when they have to go there and try to help somebody out. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I failed to mention it before, but that's a strong component of our training aspect, especially for our school resource officers.
Absolutely, Mr. President, if I can. And I thank you for that thorough explanation. I think that's something that should be brought up, especially in the community. You know, obviously, everybody on the board knows that I have a child with autism, and I have, you know, worked in the school system in the nurse's office. So that was something that was really important. But I think that's good for our community to know, you know, their background and have a better understanding exactly what it is that they do because it is important to our stakeholders and our parents to really understand. But like Commissioner Van Stone had mentioned, I'm also in support, as a mom of four children that went to our public school systems. It gives me that peace of mind that they, I feel that they are protected. But, you know, I see little maybe cracks here and there that, you know, you have concerns about. But I appreciate that explanation because that actually gives me more of a peace of mind just having that understanding that our resource officers and the police officers in the city of Waterbury are trained as much as they are. And, yeah, of course, Helen Taylor, she's, you know, she's amazing that she takes the time to really talk about that. So thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief Spagnolo.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno. Anybody else have a question? Comment? Well, Chief, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Very gracious with your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Doctor. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good seeing you again. Before I go off to the next agenda item, I am negligent in introducing our two student representatives from WHAMs. Leani Diaz, did I butcher your name or did I get it okay?
You got it right.
Thank you. And Mateo Masius have joined us, and they are both from WHAMs downtown. Thank you guys for joining us tonight.
Welcome.
Our next agenda item is the Committee on Building and School Facilities, an update on 116 Beecher Avenue property. The forthcoming judge is with us, Will Clark. And I will leave the floor to you, Will, but I got to get up and get my sciatica stretched out. So I'll be listening from the other end of my room. Floor is yours, Will.
Thank you, Commissioner Pagano. Good evening, everyone. And Will, did you make me a case? You did, thank you. I'm going to share my screen here in a second. Let me just. Here we go. Okay. Thanks for having me tonight. I wanted to give you an update on what's happening with our review of 116 Beecher Street. This is the property that the city purchased a few months ago. And we have taken some time to review the physical buildings, the old school, St. Peter and Paul, and the convent. It had a number of tours of that location. And also I had an opportunity to pull together some folks and to review some data, reported back to the superintendent, want to report back to the board tonight on some of those findings and hopefully some next steps that we can take as we begin the renovation. And much like the St. Joe's situation, we'd love to be able to do that setup consistent with the plan so that we can move forward with some programming adjustments for the next school year. So in order to review some of the data and information around the school, I pulled together some of our greatest assets, both from a technical and historical perspective, and pulled together a little subcommittee to look at the neighborhood and some logistical issues surrounding this particular area and the schools around that and district-wide, frankly, that feed into that area and programs we have across the district. So that subcommittee included myself, Will Zuda, Jeff Hunter, our transportation czar, Charlotte Shaki from over at the Welcome Center, and our old friend George D'Agostino, former administrator. former administrator, former aide to the mayor and uh, Welcome Center, uh, or Intake Center at the time, uh, leader. Um, so first, just want to give you a sense uh, of some of the, the data around the building itself. The school building, uh, that old um, Catholic school um, is forty thousand one hundred twenty-two square feet. Um, it has essentially an older section, which was the original building, and then it had an add-on section, more of your classic Catholic school kind of shoebox that then extends around to a gym area. Um, so it has that full gym, which has a stage and there's a kitchen area there. So that would serve as your cafeteria uh, and gym. And then there's four classrooms and some gang bathrooms in that, that lower uh, area, that shoebox area, if you will, uh, of the addition to the building. Um, it has administrative office space uh, by the front door that faces one sixteen Beecher Street. Um, and then three classrooms, as well as what formerly was a library, but could be converted to another classroom um, in that original building section, what would be that sort of first floor. There's a couple of stairs up um, from the uh, shoebox level up to the first floor level on the older uh, original building side. Um, second floor of the building uh, includes four uh, classrooms in that shoebox section. Again, right above uh, the, the classrooms on the first floor. Um, one of those was actually set up as a science room and has some, some water uh, and electrical setups uh, for science tables uh, that are in there. Um, there's an additional room that could be used as an office uh, for public services or a meeting room, it's a little bit smaller than the classroom, um, but that's up on that second floor also. And then four other classrooms over on uh, the original building side. The classrooms are uh, uh, good size um, and, and something that we can maybe flex around and do some different uh, different things with. Uh, there's a basement level, uh, that includes two rooms, uh, about seven hundred fifty square feet each um, that could be converted to the, a classroom um, uh, or classrooms or other educational supports uh, space services. Uh, the most recent use, they were used um, for more storage and, and office and sort of pull-out uh, space uh, if you will. Then there's two smaller rooms that are really just used for storage historically, but again, those could be repurposed for a variety of issues, smaller offices, things like that. Um, then at same level um, has the, the boiler room and, and a lot of utilities, electrical uh, pieces uh, down there in the basement area uh, as well. Up the hill is the convent, it's another seven thousand four hundred fifty-eight square feet. Um, uh, I would just note going through that with our facilities folks, Chris Harmon and his team, um, that appears to be a little bit in, in more need of uh, uh, repair and upgrade if you wanted to convert that into an educational space or office space. It is sort of structured as kind of more of a dormitory-style convent. Um, it has a larger space uh, that was used as a chapel, a, a couple of larger rooms and kitchen area type of thing, very similar to what we saw over at St. Joe's for those of you who have been over there. Um, but you know, if you wanted to convert that to an educational space or some other office space, likely needs to be kind of uh, fit up and a little bit more work uh, associated with that. Again, once the purpose of that was decided, it'd be a better point to engage in that. Um, our committee looked at the variety of potential uh, uses and configurations, including uh, considering it as a neighborhood school, uh, understanding from a district-wide perspective and looking at our strategic planning and goals, perhaps something that could be used for pre-K uh, and dedicated towards that. We also had a um, uh, understanding of the need for ELL and language support, uh, international uh, needs for our various students coming from different cultures and language backgrounds um, that are currently placed throughout the district and whether or not um, some additional more focused support would be something to look at. Um, special education, uh, not to consider this as a solely special ed scenario, but understanding that uh, perhaps where some of our programming is in a few different places, perhaps there'd be something to consider with respect to that. Um, and then it'd be a destination program, something that um, uh, could be, you say, a dual-language school or an international school and maybe try to pick up some of those four bullet points above and uh, make a program that uh, folks from a district-wide perspective might be interested and enticed to do, which could have a collateral effect or impact on supporting some of the ELL and, and other language and space concerns where we're currently kind of moving people around or busing them around to different programs throughout the city. Maybe uh, this could be a destination in a more centralized area for some of those things. A, and then because I know the board, Dr. Ruffin, others have, have a great desire to consider some other pre-K eight options, that's something this committee uh, looked at as well. Just give you a little uh, picture of the school. So this is just the front from Beecher, so that door right there is the front door of one sixteen Beecher. To the left side of the photograph, as well as referring to is that kind of shoebox classic style, two-floor uh, Catholic school, if you will. To the right uh, is the um, uh, the original building, if you will, a little bit older. Um, that's the, that really the two floors and those bottom windows you see are essentially windows that look down into the basement rooms I was describing. Um, so you see, as I was saying, it's a, if you walk in that front door there by that, that sign, um, you know, it's about uh, a few steps up to get to that first level of the older building and the uh, if you walk to the left, you have the classrooms on grade level uh, to your left that I was talking about, there's four on the first floor, four on the second floor. If you continue down the hall to your left, if I, or if I hand this photo to the left, you'd see the large parking lot and the gym slash cafeteria slash stage uh, the section of the building, which is uh, to the left of this photograph. Um, we pulled with uh, Will's help and George and Charlotte and Jeff, we, we, here's a map of, of the area that the, the school itself is right there in the red, uh, and the convent is a smaller piece of the red. Um, and we looked at the various districts around it. Um, up to the north would be Chase and Hopeville, to, to the south would be Washington and uh, Gil Martin uh, to, off to the, to the left side of the photograph and so forth. So we got a, a number of schools around it. Um, and we looked at the various uh, neighborhoods that exist to the right of this uh, yellow line. It's kind of Wembel Crosses uh, picking up that way, below it is kind of Gil Martin, above it is kind of Chase and Hopeville, uh, further below is Washington. So we didn't want to really make any kind of radical decisions here or make further adjustments that would infringe upon the, the Wembel Cross boundaries that we sort of just drew up uh, or redefined, if you will, or reconfirmed for purposes of that um, pre-K eight school. Uh, obviously didn't want to really mess with Gil Martin per se, but this is essentially a, a sort of a catchment area with, with right around this neighborhood that could be considered kind of a neighborhood pull. And we're not doing that necessarily to say that neighborhood school is what it has to be, but just to give you a sense of the type of population that's right in this uh, right in this area. And this is that population. So currently, folks who live in that area that I just showed you in that, in that framed area, uh, that's about a hundred ninety-one is in fact, exactly, a hundred ninety-one students um, of all these different grades. So it's, it's really spread out among the grades. Um, and currently they're going to a variety of different places. Some in that area, Chase, Generali, Hopeville uh, are, are right sort of to the, the north and the uh, west of that photo, um, or that map. Um, Gil Martin, obviously uh, there, there's a, a couple, um, but that's uh, below and, and, and folks have moved in there. There's some of them chosen the magnet option, uh, Maloney uh, and Rotella. Um, and others for a variety of reasons, um, you know, ha, uh, are, are at other schools. And of course you pick up for Wallace, some folks obviously have chosen the Academy. But if you just went strict kind of neighborhood, who's living in that kind of six, eight block radius? Um, you, you know, you basically have a small school. Uh, we also pulled the ELL numbers uh, and again, in that area. I'm not going further out, just literally in that sort of somewhat tight catchment area. About ninety-seven kids uh, who are currently um, participating in the ELL program. It's a couple of different grades uh, in different schools, uh, but of a Chase. Um, uh, some over at Generali, in the classroom we have over there. And twenty-six over at the, some of the classrooms, early grades. At Hopeville, Chase has some of the uh, uh, higher elementary grades. And then um, some, just from the numbers game, uh, are actually bu, bussed up to Bucks Hill. Um, and then special ed, um, you know, this is more indicative of programming, frankly. But again, we were looking at these, where are these kids from this area going? Um, and there's about fifty-eight currently who are uh, serviced for special ed programming um, in these uh, half-dozen or so schools. So um, i, i, basically the idea being if you, you know, if you could figure out a way to thread the needle and, and, and cover the needs of all these students, they would be on basically a five, six block radius to a, a school program that, that could, could fit them likely and possible uh, based upon the specific needs of certain children, particularly the SPED program, their IEPs and so forth. But again, just want to give you that snapshot of the, the numbers. Uh, from a comparable uh, and a square footage perspective, um, just gives you a, a snapshot of the size uh, of a number of our elementary schools, both in that area and around the district, as well as our pre-K eight schools. So you see that, that forty thousand, and even if you threw in the convent, you're talking, you get closer to forty-seven, fifty thousand square feet-ish. Um, this is really more akin to the size that we're used to for an elementary. Um, uh, our pre-Ks tend to be a, a bit larger. Now, that includes the, most of those schools, as you well know, Carrington, Doug and Gil Martin Reed have gyms and a cafeteria as a separate deal. Um, so this is one that has that kind of combined, you know, so there could be some square foot trade-offs when you think about it that way. Um, but just, you know, want to give you some apples to apples kind of thing. So um, you know, would be a little more space challenged the larger you make the program for how we tend to run our programs. But um, you know, if you think about Bucks Hill, you think about Wilson, you think about some other places, uh, Generali. Um, you know, we have some creative ways to solve that. Um, if you thought about this from a longer-term planning perspective, whether it's modulars, whether you think about a, a project down the road for uh, an extension, this particular property does have one big asset and value, which is land. So um, there's a, a big parking lot um, on the side of the school. There's the parking lot behi, right behind the school and one could envision maybe doing an extension back there and/or dropping some modulars. And then of course you have the convent up the hill and, you know, depending on design and creativity, not impossible to think about doing an extension of that way uh, that added some classroom space or maybe some other use space to uh, connect the dots for a, a, a future program. So with all that said, um, our subcommittee um, thought uh, that we certainly could support uh, a, a district or neighborhood school. And that's not to say that it would necessarily only be a district or neighborhood school. It could also be a s, uh, just a neighborhood school rather. It could be a district school that has some neighborhood preference. Um, you know, lots of ways to, 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 to play with that. Um, we also felt like uh, based on the numbers and based on where we're currently busing kids and what the population of this particular neighborhood is, that that ELL or dual-language or international school really fits the need or the, the demographic uh, population of this particular area based on that analysis. Um, we did. We note that the pre-K eight program would be something to consider over time. Uh, and if that's something the board is, is interested in, we just sort of flag and put a pin in that thing I just discussed about the square footage. It may be something we have to grow into and maybe something that we want to think about from a longer-term plan of do we have to add uh, some space over time? Um, or connect this to some other programming across the district uh, over time. Um, so that's something to think about. Uh, and also, uh, you know, you've heard me beat this drum before, but uh, certainly have to have eyes wide open about sustainable funding and long-term district planning. Um, and that would be necessary to think this through. We are um, uh, currently engaged in discussions with the NSR money coming down the pipe and with Dr. Ruffin and the team um, uh, as, as to considering uh, doing more of an infrastructure analysis, perhaps bringing someone in to help us with that um, and review it, you know, taking a, taking that step back in longer lens view of, of what our district uh, is, what our infrastructure capacity is, what our enrollment capacity is and so forth. And I think that's something that could fit nicely uh, with this particular new asset and, and with what the, the sort of population of district needs um, are. Uh, there are transportation impacts here, um, but again, we're currently busing some kids out of that area. If we were to, you know, um, ha, satisfy and, and have folks who, from that area who took advantage of a program here and then, and then made it say a district-wide program and bust other kids in, that could actually end up being a net even. Uh, if you think about it that way, you might be reducing some busing for the local kids who now can stay closer and then maybe there's an opportunity for some other kids from other locations who need the services of say, a dual-language or an international school uh, would come in. So those that were going out would now be coming in essentially kind of the same bus. Uh, so uh, could be some magic for Jeff to work there. Um, but I think end of the day, while we want to sort of flag that, that that's something to think about and look at and cost out, um, given how we're currently busing people out, um, again, maybe just a matter of moving around, but still kind of evening out or, or net evening uh, ish the buses. Um, and again, the program design and alignment um, should line up with our reimagining work that we're doing. Um, and we think that does line up uh, with some consideration for that dual-language or international um, and with perhaps that pre-K eight lens. So in that respect, um, you, you, maybe if I go back to my original bulletin, it's possible, uh, and maybe we're trying to thread the needle too thin here, but I think it is possible to have some pre-K opportunity, to have that ELL or dual-language or international theme kind of support. Um, if, if there is uh, you know, potentially some SPED program there, you could really um, thread a needle here and, and create something that could do a number of those things, if not all of the things um, uh, on that. With the only caveat being you might, over time, need to add some, some space for capacity if you really fully wanted to go out to that pre-K eight space. But it's certainly something that could start, as Dr. Ruffin has been, I think, talking and thinking um, in that sort of pre-K one, pre-K two uh, ish uh, that no question can fit. And that's no question something that we could certainly work on and, and fit up that space, particularly that shoebox side of the building space. Um, and have that capacity, then buy us some time to think about the older part of the building. We'll be doing some boiler work and replacing that uh, and doing some other elements, but it gives us some time to think through the further elements uh, of the program. So I'll stop there uh, and, and maybe uh, turn it over to Dr. Ruffin to, to uh, put a bow on this and then uh, take any questions.
Let's see if we um, have any questions to first. Uh, well, I would, I would like to um, uh, to strongly ask the board to consider this being the international school and starting with a pre-K uh, kindergarten and first grade in twenty-one, twenty-two, which is in the fall. And um, two classes of each grade level and gives us the time to be able to grow out as Will described. So in, in, in seven years, that school becomes that pre-K eight. Uh, and so certainly, you know, before seven years and as the school continues to grow and add one grade level every year thereafter, there's going to be continued work and renovations to the school uh, as we originally planned.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. At least that is some sort of direction to what we thought this building could be. Uh, to be honest, if this was a presentation for a business plan, um, and I was the program manager, I would probably reject it, that the building should not be purchased. Uh, that's behind us now is the only one who brought up these sorts of facts uh, that we had no plan in place when we made this purchase, uh, but we won't go back over history. My uh, opinion is this probably, looking at the numbers presented tonight, was probably a better choice to say be a Chase annex and give them some relief of student population or special ed. To uh, do what we want to do for this building for just two grades, uh, to me, uh, it just seems like a complete waste of space. And continuing on the business plan piece of this, uh, when you compare square footage, uh, it, it doesn't even fit into what we show as elementary schools. Um, other than uh, and if you give the benefit of the doubt for the convent, it only is greater in square footage than one school. And if you take out the convent, its square footage is less than all schools presented. So um, I will totally uh, be confident in the fact that I voted against even making this purchase. So uh, moving forward, Sam, we're already here. Um, and we think we have at least one opportunity uh, to utilize this building, which is better than none. We also, at the time we purchased this, budgeted a million dollars uh, for renovations. Uh, there's nothing in this uh, presentation that tells me anything about any ongoing renovations, planned renovations. So uh, what's going on with that million dollars? Uh, and I certainly hope uh, I'm gonna be And I certainly hope I'm going to be told that we're doing at least something.
Yeah, I can start that, Dr. Ruffin, if you don't mind. So eight hundred thousand dollars was budgeted for that as part of the purchase for renovations. And we have already, as we've said before publicly, and that we would be looking to pursue similar to St. Joe's, lighting, floor upgrades, wiring, security, and we've talked about the boiler. So all of those pieces, the wheels are moving on all those. We're working on having specs drawn up, working with a consultant for the boiler piece, which will include, you know, basically getting an energy efficient boiler, likely switching to natural gas from the current oil, which is not all that cost-effective, so the particular boiler that's in there now is not. And that appears to be the route we're going there, so that process is ongoing. As we get those specs completed, that will be put out to bid, and that will, that piece, that's a big piece of the puzzle that will go. And then we will perform any of the other elements in-house, as we did with St. Joe's, with respect to the floor, painting, drop ceiling, LED lights, and the wirings, which will include security phone, et cetera. So our IT department, our facilities department, has been engaged in those elements, and we wanted, so we've been planning and preparing those pieces. The phase-in approach, as Dr. Ruffin's been talking about, would complement that nicely as far as a workload piece for us, but we can ramp up as needed, and we feel confident with that eight hundred thousand dollars, and particularly doing a number of the pieces in the house that we can, and meet that, particularly with our St. Joe's experience. And so that, those are the pieces to that puzzle that are in place with respect to the square footage. Based on a lot of classrooms, if you think about our class size, the building actually can quite easily handle up to three hundred kids, so if you do that math. So that would be potentially a pre-K8, albeit a smaller version. You know, so it depends on how many classes per grade you want and how many other programs and support you'd want to handle with it. But I think phasing it in gives us that ability to grow into it, particularly if it's a different curricular program that you want to sort of grow up to. I think it will, it does have the great potential to offset some of that ELL population that's currently in Hopeville or Chase. If some of those students' families would choose an international dual-language program, for example, that would naturally relieve some of that need and pressure where we have additional ELL rooms at Chase and Hopeville, and if that population was to even out a bit, that would essentially give back space to both Chase, Hopeville, and Franklin General as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Still, my same comments exist. Okay, eight hundred thousand. But if we don't have tuck labor happening at this time, and it's March, and we don't even have POs in place and work started, I find it extremely hard to believe that we can allow our students into that building in six months. So I think we're way behind the curve. Speaking for myself, I think we've done an extremely poor job of preparing this building. I also see an awful lot of work going on, both in decision-making for this building, which this board has to approve the finances, but apparently we have, other than being told, we have no input for the usage. And that's becoming just too much of a recurring theme, that this board is being taken out of significant decision-making. So, Mr. President, I'll conclude with that. You know, I gave my protest to this when we voted on it, and I really think we are not in a position at all to see this as a function of building in six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanstone. Any other comments, discussion points? Commissioner Ann Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pagano. Well, in the past, I asked Will Zuda to take a look at a radius around a particular building of a mile, since that's the distance that we can require elementary school children to walk to school. So is that, in these figures, the neighborhood enrollment facts, are they within a mile radius of the former St. Peter and Pauls?
Yes, and Will's on here as well, so he can jump in. But again, it was, that was part of the consideration, but we were also kind of mindful of Wendell Cross and Gil Martin. But it's a practical matter, it's, you know, it's not quite a mile this way, around a mile that way, and so forth, but generally speaking, it's pretty close to that. But I will defer to Will here to correct me, as he is our expert map drawer.
No, Mr. Clark, you pretty much touched on the point. If you want to bring up the map, I can explain a little more logic behind the decision. There is some, like the Mad River, you'll be able to see on the map, which cuts across, and there are those sidewalks that go over. So we really carved that neighborhood, bring that part of the neighborhood over. So if you look over to the right, you see the Mad River runs down from the little lake that kind of cuts the neighborhood there. So if we were looking at a walking school, neighborhood school, we wanted to eliminate any type of busing, you really couldn't get the kids over to the school without having to walk down to East Main and then walk up and then back up Beecher. If you look down below here, next to Hamilton Park, you got White City down there, and White City is primarily a Gil Martin district. We carved that out when we put Gil Martin Plan together. So we were trying to not disrupt Gil Martin's population by pulling them out of there. And then over on the other side of the Marionette Road, to the left of the chart, I mean, you have, you know, a really busy road that you don't want kids crossing. I mean, it's a neighborhood that we can go up into, and we had to increase the district. But we were just looking, and we noticed that we had enough kids to kind of complete a neighborhood by just staying within the confines of knowing that we had sidewalks and knowing that if there were safe areas for these kids to walk to this location if they had to.
Okay. So as a student of this school, we lived in the Reedville section, which is up past Cavalry Cemetery, and we could not get a bus to school because there were available sidewalks for us to walk. So we walked from that area over to St. Peter and Pauls. This area, in terms of sidewalks, is probably better than most sections of the city. In terms of crosswalks, better than most sections of the city. I would be concerned about the traffic on East Main Street, tends to be a raceway at some times, but I see the potential for that there. We're looking at, by the numbers, just K through five, we could pull ninety-nine kids out of Chase. That's huge in a school that is overpopulated by about three hundred kids. That's huge. I don't see, if we're going to, you know, continue to look at this, and I hope we will, as some form of a pre-K through eight, I don't see numbers, I see the Wallace Academy numbers for the kindergartens through five. I don't see the Wallace numbers for six through eight. So I would expect that some of those students live in this same area. I would like to see the numbers that we would draw and where in the middle grades we would draw them for potential down the road. I understand the need, given the space that's there, to look at some other configuration of a program, and I will support that, given what we have to work with. However, I would love to see the pre-K through eight stay on the table and work to see if we can't do that in some form or fashion. So thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Commissioner Charles Stango, the floor is yours.
Thank you. When we're talking about the special school for dual-language, I would, I mean, not that I don't want to see it there, but I think St. Peter and Paul could have probably helped us in the long run in other places. However, I do favor the dual-language school, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can carve out a section of, say, like, North End or West Side, much like we did carving out a section for the special academy at Wallace, if that would solve that problem. And then, as we go up after the second, third, and fourth year, we can make an assessment of if that's where it can stay, or if we have more space to move it at that point. So I would wonder if we can do a carve-out of someplace, Doctor, just for a discussion.
We can certainly look at numbers, and, you know, definitely to be able to provide that with the pre-K and the K and the first grade. In year one, we're looking at two classes per grade level. I do not believe that currently we have any other school that could take two classes per grade level and grow out the program without eventually getting to a place where you may have to consider displacing the other students that are currently at that school once they get into sixth grade, and that could potentially be problematic. But it certainly is something that, when we're willing to study and to bring to the board for your consideration, because as this program grows, you could create the program so that the majority of the students or a percentage of the students accepted into the international school are students that live within the neighborhood, and they would potentially come from all of the schools that you're discussing now that are in close proximity to the schools that are overcrowded and continue to grow your program. Half of the students that will attend this international school with a focus on dual-language, half of the students will be English speakers, and they could come from the neighborhood as well as all over the district. Another one-half of the students will be non-English speakers, and they're going to both be learning English and Spanish simultaneously. So it is a program that has potential opportunity for growth in this district. There's seemingly a lot of interest for it, at least when, from when I first came to Waterbury, that was an expression of a desire from many of the parents and community as they spoke at various forums, and this gives it an opportunity to be able to be there and potentially could grow a pre-K8 as the board has liked to continue to grow into our district. So that was just out of the table, and, you know, presented to you as an option, a viable option, and one that, since the school was already occupied, I don't believe that anything prohibits us from occupying the school in the fall, knowing that there is some work that needs to be done as we continue to grow the program, regardless of what program it is, moving towards the future.
Commissioner Liz Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you for this information. I think it's very critical for us to make these decisions. I just had a question about, when Wendell Cross is built, will that impact the overcrowding at Chase School? I think that's something I probably should know, but I don't remember. And the second issue is, I assume that when Wendell Cross is built, St. Joseph's School, that was totally retrofitted and looks really good, have we thought of what use we're going to use for that building? So I do like the idea of, I think Will mentioned, getting really a hard look at all of our facilities and, you know, how we should be using them and using the space wisely, looking to the reimagining of education in Waterbury. So I guess, I guess I would need some more information. I'm totally in favor of an international dual-language school, but I do like the idea of a pre-K to eight school in that neighborhood. So there was some way that we could look at other options, as Charles had said, maybe even St. Joseph's School would be appropriate for the international school. But I do think we need to get a handle on what space and use of our schools, and I like the idea of doing that study. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see anybody waving their hand, so thank you very much, Will and Dr. Ruffin. Our next agenda item is a superintendent's update. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So we start off with the international school with a focus on dual-language. We've had two or three informational meetings with parents and those interested in learning more about the dual-language program. We have emphasized that this program is for students in pre-K and kindergarten and first grade as a first-year start. We have not identified a school, and you heard this evening that, yes, I would like to have it in a full school, but no one made that decision. But it is something that I do bring to the board as a viable option, pre-K, two grades there, two grades of kindergarten and two grades of first grade. But there has been no announcement as to where this international school is going to be with a focus on dual-language. We've stated that at all of the meetings that we've had, and will continue to state it until a decision has been made where the program is going to be. However, having said that, the dual-language affords our students an opportunity to learn two languages simultaneously. It makes the students extremely marketable in terms of their opportunities within the school as well as post-secondary options. It affords the student to be able to master speaking and communicating and writing and talking in two languages fluently, and they learn both languages simultaneously. It is not meant for only students who speak English and Spanish, it's meant for students who are learning English and Spanish. So obviously, by design, there's fifty percent of the students that will be enrolled in the school will be only English speakers, and another fifty percent that will be speakers of another language, but both groups of students are going to be learning English and Spanish simultaneously. It is also an expectation that when students will finish, whether the school is a pre-K5 or pre-K8, that they will have opportunities to earn advanced placement credits upon leaving the international school slash dual-language school, and they will also have an opportunity to earn a biliteracy seal, which many of our students are currently, have already earned, and I believe we have over eighty students that are going to be taking the biliteracy, the exam this coming weekend in eleven languages. So we are pleased that those two programs potentially intersect to allow students an opportunity to be fluent and to be able to not only earn scholarships, but also be able to take a significant role in the workforce as it continues to develop internationally. Also, with the international school, we could create an enrollment process or registration process. It would be a lottery, but it could be a lottery with designations for a particular community. For instance, as some of our board members were asking, because of the overcrowdedness that we have in certain schools, that a percentage of the community would be guaranteed a slot based on a lottery selection because they live within the neighborhood, and the other percentages could come from across the city. It is for Waterbury residents, it is only for Waterbury residents, and so we would seek to be actively recruiting our students whose parents are interested in enrolling them in pre-K and kindergarten and first grade, adding one grade level per year as the program continues to grow. And based on the board's decision, if you want this in a pre-K5 school, then the fifth grade is the last year it would go. I would like to see it go through eighth grade, because then it offers students, once they enroll in high school, an opportunity to take advanced placement courses and to earn advanced placement credits in multiple languages, and also to be able to work towards that biliteracy seal. That's kind of where we are now. I would expect that within the next several days, after we've had informational sessions, we will begin a we will begin a, a registration process that will allow parents to register for their students to attend. And then, of course, we would then have to determine based on where the school is going to be, the capacity. So we could select and accurately select students to participate in this very first year. And also, just as information, I think just as we have seen with the creation of the Academic Academy as well as the creation of Early College High School, once parents know where the program is, there seems to be a heightened level of interest because then parents know where their children will actually be attending school. You know, if the board is not ready to make that decision now, we, we are fine with that. But I just wanted to ask you what your thoughts were because I do know that that is a question frequently asked when we have met with parents on informational sessions. Where's the school going to be? Will transportation be provided? And what's the process for getting in? I'll stop there in the event that there are questions or if any other members of my team have anything to add at this time.
Anybody want to add anything from Dr. Ruffin's team? Charles Spango, I see your hand waving.
Thank you. Just a question for you, Doctor. You talk about it's going to be a, a pre-K slot for this dual language school. Is, is that going to be a, a brand new pre-K class that we don't have now? I mean, in other words, we have X number now. Will it be X plus one or two when the dual language begins?
That would depend on the pre-K enrollment. Our pre-K classes at this time are based on the number of students, the number of parents who enroll their children in pre-K. So it, it may not be an additional or two additional pre-Ks overall. It may be the total number of pre-K students whose parents enroll them in pre-K.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Charles. Anybody else got a question for Dr. Ruffin or any one of our team members? Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno.
Thank you. I should add more names to that for you, Chuck. Thank you. Dr. Ruffin, my question or maybe even just a, a thought for, for the future. I do believe, you, you know, I love the, the idea and focus on the dual language for our students. Maloney did the, the Japanese, or they still do. My son Jacob did that. It was pre-K through five. But I believe they had the opportunity, once he was in middle school, to go to like an after-school or something at Maloney to continue the, the, the Japanese language. It, it wasn't all the time. He wasn't able to, to do it all the time because it is after-school and other commitments that he had. But that could be potentially an idea if, depending on the number of students for this international school. If we do pre-K through five, maybe we can offer some kind of after-school program for those students that, you know, go to sixth to eighth grade to continue to either go back to that school to continue that dual language. I don't know, maybe as an option, if that's something that you've, you've thought about. I just wanted to throw that out there in case it wasn't, if, if we're not able to turn it into a pre-K through, through eight. But I, I do love the fact of the opportunities that it provides to our students, especially for either college applications or just even, you know, job readiness that, you know, nowadays you'd need to be bilingual. So thank you and, and for your team for even coming up with, with this plan. And I'm looking forward to, to seeing it grow.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dr. Ruffin.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to speak about the, the magnet school expansion. And actually, that's a conversation that just rolls right off of the international school and school options for our students. Again, this is something that I'm bringing before the board so that not only discussions, but eventually decision-making. So our magnet schools operate under the Magnet School Grant. Now I will ask Doreen Biello also to tag team with me on here because she also has some additional data. So I'm going to present you with several of facts tonight for your thoughts and for, for you to discuss it perhaps a future meeting. But it is very significant to have this conversation with the board members right now. As we continue to examine trends in the district, when we have waiting lists for students in some of our schools and we see that we have waiting lists for students who wish to enter into some of our magnet programs. But because of capacity and because of the way the grant is written, there's a certain percentage of, of students that can enroll in, in WHAMs and in Maloney and Rotella that, that either prohibit us from expanding beyond a current percentage of students in the city as well as neighboring towns. Having said that, we also have seen some data that suggests to us that our pre-K eight models work well in the district. We even see trends in student achievement getting better in our pre-K eight schools. And so, and we, we've gotten three schools that are really poised for some amazing work through the Commissioners Network in our sixth, seventh and eighth grade middle schools. And I'm pleased with the work that they're doing. And they're really focusing on the Commissioners Network, the, the, the proposal that they submitted and the, the critical work that they are committed to doing. And I'm pleased with the progress that they're making. Even in the pandemic, they're doing quite well. But we also know that there are student losses during transition years. So from fifth to sixth grade and then again from eighth to ninth grade. And we've seen that for many years in Waterbury. So with opportunities and more competitiveness, it's, it's, it's critical that we take a look at what some of our options are going to be, particularly since the board is in favor of more pre-K eights. I wanted to give you some information that may help you in making a decision. When we ask for additional information on the magnet schools, specifically the ability to grow sixth grade for this coming school year, there, there are some options there to be considered by the board. One option is we could, for instance, expand sixth grade at Maloney. We could. However, that means that it affects WHAM and also Rotella in their totality of numbers of students that can be enrolled in, in the three magnet programs. So then the, the numbers and the percentages, both of in Waterbury residents and out of Waterbury residents would still apply for the three magnets. And the total number of student capacity for the three magnets would remain the same. But it could be that one school continues to grow and the other schools maintain the way they currently are. Especially since the last two years, maybe even longer than that, there, there were some slots that were not filled at, at, at the magnet schools. So there's room to be able to add more students. We could consider that as an option in expanding sixth grade at one of the schools. In the absence of doing that, then we, we can all, we could anticipate that if students cannot get into the school of choice that they have chosen, that sometimes those are the students that leave Waterbury Public Schools. And, and, and another factor that I, I want to bring to the board is if we do increase and keep sixth grade next year, and if we're able to do that without overextending our current grant, the board still needs to consider the options of when a new grant application is written. If it is not approved by the Magnet Schools Office, then are we in Waterbury Public Schools capable of sustaining a, a, the sixth, seventh and eighth grade even at our own expense without Magnet School funds? And so if the answer would be leaning towards, no, we can't sustain them, then I think we need to look at the amount of funding that Waterbury Public Schools already expands when students leave Waterbury to attend another program outside of Waterbury Public Schools. And that's in excess of $700,000. And, and so I don't know, Doreen, if you have any numbers that you would like to share? But those are implications. It's almost a matter of can we create the structure to make that happen and sustain it in Waterbury Public Schools? Or is Waterbury Public Schools willing to continue to spend funding to let our students leave the district for something that they're already telling us that they need within the district?
Thank you, everybody. So right now, our magnet grant totals $8.8 million. That would be for Maloney, Rotella, and includes WHAMs Middle and High. Maloney and Rotella each receive a little over 2.6 million of that 8.8 and the remainder, three point, a little, almost 3.5 goes to WHAMs for mo- the enrollment at each school is pretty close to capacity. And we have to maintain up to a 75% for the single district percentage for our Waterbury students. So if we go above Waterbury students at 75%, that affects our funding. So we have to maintain a 75% Waterbury, 25% out of district. For a resident student, the amount is $3,060. For a non-resident, which is out of district, is $7,227. With that being said, I do want to say that the Magnet School Grant in the proposed governor's budget is to remain flat. So if there is an additional grade that we want to expand at the, at the, any one of the magnets, that would have to be within the, the aggregate cap or it would become a district expense. So if we want to expand a sixth grade, let's say at Maloney, either we have to take lesser kids in, in, in the other grades to maintain the aggregate cap and, and not make it be an additional cost to the district. But if we want to expand that a little further, then we would have to have that as a district expense. In order to do something like this, a proposal will have to be sent to the State Department of Education that articulates what this entire plan will be for the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. That entire proposal needs to include the projections of what you want our enrollment to be for sixth, seventh and eighth, what the budget would be for sixth, seventh and eighth, and what the facility would be for sixth, seventh and eighth. So can the buildings that we are at now hold the additional grades? So if that is not the case, we have to put into the plan where we would have the additional grades be housed at. And again, that would, that would go into a whole other issue of if you want to house it at a different building, what building would that be? And what improvements would be needed for that building? And that would have to be an application to the Department of Administrative Services. So there is some timing issues with all of this and, and decision-making. However, we do, we do lose some students that go to other districts, programs, out of district here. We are losing some sixth graders in seventh and eighth grade middle schools that go to like an Aces or a Cracker or a Learn. However, we also know that our magnet school does feed into our middle and high school magnet here at WHAMs. So that could affect the enrollment for WHAMs based on, you know, if there's an expansion. So there's a lot to, to think about. But again, you know, K to eights are a way to go. But we think we have to look at the entire picture, I think, before a decision's made.
Thank you, Doreen. Anyone have a question or a comment for Doreen? I don't see anybody waving their hands. So Doctor, you got the next agenda item?
I do. And, and so I, prior to closing this, I would like to ask the board, when would a decision technically be made about the next steps? Both in the international school for dual language? And what are your thoughts on the magnet school? And not for discussion tonight necessarily, but as superintendent, I would like some direction so that we could make plans accordingly. And if there's additional information that you would like for us to share, we will prepare that so that the board can, can set the course and provide some direction for, for me to follow. And I would appreciate that. My last item for tonight is to talk about our, our returning into a longer school day. We are doing this on Monday, March 15th. And when I say a longer school day, I mean more of the typical school day that we had in 2020. And schools are, are working on what that schedule would look like in terms of the day-to-day operations, the, the, of course, the, the classes, the social distancing, the PPEs, all of the safety protocols for opening schools for the full day as opposed to its current hybrid model will allow for students who perhaps have not been in school for a full day since March of 2020 to, to have that option of returning. There's a, a, a survey that went out to our families to determine whether they will be sending their students for a full day of school. We still have the Virtual Academy. At this time, I have no indication that the 30 or 24% of the students that are currently in the hybrid model in person, I have no indication that that's going to increase. It could be that we have 24 or 30% of our students still in person but going all day. And the remainder of the students may still be choosing that virtual model. But it is very important to us to, to open the school for the full day so that students could be getting, getting the instructional design that may be more conducive to some of their learning and particularly affecting some of our elementary school students, especially the younger grades where we believe that the, the face-to-face interaction with their teachers and the connection with their teachers all day is, is critically missing. Having said that, for the full day, and, and I will get back to the board as soon as we've had significant returns on the survey to give you a better idea of how many parents are sending their children back full day and how many are still going to be taking the virtual option. It comes with challenges. It, it is not, it is not without its challenges at all. You know, for instance, now for the last several months, we've been pleased that Waterbury Public Schools never closed its doors. We continue to have instruction Monday through Friday. Every day there was instruction, though it was a hybrid model. It was only in the morning. Now it's going to be all day. What that brings in terms of challenges is that our, our lunch periods have to be managed at the school. We need to continue to observe the six feet apart and the PPEs and the frequent hand washing and the frequent cleaning of the schools. All of those things will continue, but we'll, we'll be in school all day. We've never needed to mitigate the multiple lunch breaks that we're going to have to do when everybody returns or when more students return or even if no more students return, just the fact that it's all day. Now we're looking at recess and periods of being able to, to take a break and periods that allow students to frequently hand wash and also periods where we know that passing periods, we're examining the various cohorts for elective classes. And, and we believe that's challenging for the elementary schools, especially when students are attending specials and they may be attending a different special every day. All of those things bring about challenges as schools will be operating in a full day schedule beginning on March 15th. We're working collectively with the staff in, in, in assisting and, and addressing all of those concerns because they're real concerns. In addition to that, we are also aware that we continue to monitor the levels of COVID-19 and we continue to communicate when there are cases. We're very pleased, however, that vaccine has been available for our, our staff, our teaching and working staff, everyone who has contact with students in schools will, will be in line for a vaccine. I want to remind everyone that the vaccines are not arriving for everyone on one day. They arrive as soon as they are released by the federal government to the states. And once the states distribute those to districts, that's when people are notified that they're next in line to receive their vaccine. And, and we've done quite well. But we only go as fast as we can based on the number of vaccines that we receive. If we receive more vaccines, we'll go faster with the vaccines. And um it it's it the the organization of the entire process to administer vaccines in Waterbury is quite a smooth one. Um, you know, we have several facilities that uh that do administer the vaccines. We're very pleased that for a portion of Wham's. Along with the collaboration in St. Mary's Hospital and with the city of Waterbury, we're able to do that seven days a week. And we also have designated areas for our own staff that's at Wham's. And it's designated for our employees. However, that's not the only place that our employees can go to receive the vaccine. And having said that, I believe that that was a significant missing piece. Oh, as we were talking about returning to school more in person, I think the the concern was, but we don't have a vaccine. Well, now we do. And no, not everyone is going to be vaccinated by March fifteenth. That's a process. And again, to remind everyone, the vaccines are distributed. It based on the quantity that districts receive, that that actually that cities receive. Uh, uh, and and that's how we're going to assure that our staff will be first in line, but it's first in line based on availability. And uh it it's been going very well. I know for for the person that hasn't received the vaccine, it probably doesn't appear to be going very well. Uh, but as the quantities come in, that's when the plans are made for 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 the vaccine. I'll stop right there before I make a final uh closing statement about plans for the remainder of the year. After we start going to school for for a full day, in case you have any questions about that.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Uh, uh, Dr. Ruffin, uh, you know, and I sent you a note saying congratulations. Uh, as far as our staff being able to uh be on be in contact. Uh, with such a high percentage of our students uh on the national level, uh, you know, it's being reported. Uh, students are uh basically missing. Uh, and uh, your response back to me suggests that we've done a great job. Uh, of going and finding our students and having them, uh, how much they partake is another story, but. Um, at least being identified uh our students and where they are. So I did want to uh uh say that as well. So congratulations to your team. On doing such. Uh, second thing with COVID. Uh, you know, as far as Wham's is concerned, we certainly have had uh some email traffic through the commissioners. As well as personal contact with parents concerned with uh that being a vaccination site. Uh, I've tried to reassure them that it's a uh single access point. Uh, elevators are monitored. Uh, traffic of the people coming and going is monitored, and that piece of the building is not being used by students uh directly. Um, is there anything you can add to that just to uh try to give some uh comfort to parents who may be concerned? With that being a uh vaccination site, I've really tried hard to tell them it should not be a concern, but if there's anything you want to add.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I I I do want to add uh several points. First of all, any time uh that. Uh, a school is used in any portion of the building, it 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 uh it brings about a concern level. Uh, you know, y- y- yes, we understand that schools are public buildings. We understand they're they're owned by the taxpayers. And that's fine. I have my classroom, but when you want my classroom, I don't feel that way anymore. Um, and so uh because that's my classroom and 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 there's inconveniences with that. But we are in a pandemic. Uh, we have been together working on. An impossible task that together we've been able to get through. And no, it has not been a smooth smooth sailing and and we've hit many rough spots, but we've come out together. Doing the best that we could with the situation that we are handed. And so uh I I I am pleased to say, however. That um that area i- i- in Wham's is really connected to the Palace Theater. And uh I am so thrilled that if it had to be anywhere, that's it is with a school that has a partnership. With the Performing Arts Center, where our students can actually have access to a performing arts center. Had it happened at another school, I couldn't say that for for another space. Now, I know that doesn't make anyone happy, you know, about it, but it is an operation that is running very smoothly. And when you think of the greater good, which is to provide our citizenship, which is where we started, you know, seventy five and older. With easier access to being able to get that vaccine, it was really uh. It was touching to know how appreciative our citizens were to be able to get to a place. You know, w- without the difficulty of having to park many blocks away, to be able to have access to a place, get that vaccine. Be in a safe place, have zero contact with children, have zero contact with anyone that could have. Perhaps uh caused fear and and to do so with the collaboration with St. Mary's Hospital. Um, you know, uh, and with, you know, the city with the emergency management team. Uh, I think that uh when you when you look at it in totality, it was the right thing to do, even though it did not make people happy. In terms of safety, yes, I've been there several times. Uh, I, you know, I it the the operation itself. Uh, I kudos to um the the city, kudos to the mayor for advocating for vaccines for the city. And for being able to get us the vaccines that we have because now we went from the seventy five-year-olds and older. To now we're being able to provide vaccines uh to our staff right there. Now, I um, and so I do have that positive spin on it because that's how I see it.
And 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 I appreciate your your add the words, and I certainly have cautioned people and say, look. Um, I know the footprint, obviously, we know the footprint well. Um, and it and and it's actually a perfect. Uh, site to do such such an event and and I have the trust in everything in the school. Um, you know, that no one can stray uh and and be anywhere they shouldn't be. So uh, and I'll know firsthand come next Friday. Um, when they stick a needle in my arm at Wham's, so uh thankfully for that. Um, so uh I I I appreciate that, and I I've really tried to let people know that uh. I I think we're doing everything right, and the students are in uh by no means any sort of jeopardy. Uh, the second thing for COVID I want to ask, and I know uh Attorney Shaw is on the call. Uh, I think she's on the call. Uh, we did have uh something come up in the Saw negotiations. Uh, where uh we we put into play uh on their request. Uh, not being forced to have a vaccine, which uh, you know, we we knew the potential consequences. Uh, when we agreed to it, however, um, how are we going to deal with that uh going forward? Uh, and I assume we have to just say, okay, if you don't want the vaccine, you don't get it. But then how do we uh deal with that as far as our workplace? Either Doctor or Tara, if she's on.
It's on.
She's on. She was on.
I am here. Can you hear me? I'm not sure why my video is off.
We can hear you. We don't see you, but we can hear you. There you are.
Okay, apologies. Um, yes, we did include language um in the Saw contract. That um does not uh mandate vaccination by state or federal law. It's also consistent with the city's current uh vaccination policy, which is a voluntary policy. Um, it does encourage people, um, our employees to become vaccinated, but I'm mandating that. Um, so that is the city's current action consistent with the language in the Saw contract as well.
Okay, and I know it being a contract to union, et cetera, it's uh certainly, it is what it is, right? It's black and white. Uh, but I knew that no at uh uh non-union uh type places, including hospitals. Uh, even as little as the flu shot, if uh you choose not to get it. Um, there are um, you know, workplace requirements of that person not getting it. Uh, to do things to protect not just themselves but others. Um, so that's that's my second part of my question. Um, and I I, you know, Tara, I knew that would be the answer. You know, we we were there when we discussed this, but. Uh, now that we're where we're at and a vaccine is there, uh, how do we deal with the people that do say? Uh, I choose not to get it. Is there anything um, you know, we can do uh continuing PPE? Anything of that nature to address that?
If I could jump in here, Tara, on that one, just on the facility piece of it, um, two things, Commissioner. Yeah, sorry. Said the two things, Commissioner. One, um, as you well recall, the timing of that uh language was uh many months ago and. Um, certain reactions and concerns and and feelings about a variety of things, um, including. Government, how government was handling the pandemic to vaccines not even really existing at that point were uh a concern. Um, since that time, uh, Dr. Ruffin's uh leadership and and with the mayor and and team support. Um, you know, obviously, we're in a much different place. We've done surveys. The survey response from staff was overwhelming. Uh, as we've opened the hotline and and the uh opportunity for staff to get the vaccine. Um, the slots is filled up uh immediately uh with teachers, paras, administrators right off the line. Uh, but to your point, uh, the protocols don't change. Uh, so the same protocols we've had in place since March remain in place and. Those PPE requirements are there, the social distancing is there, the signage is there. As Dr. Ruffin mentioned about the cafeteria pieces. We are working very closely with our food services department in each school. Uh, plans will adjust slightly based upon what school's configuration is, how many kids are actually in person. How big the cafeteria is, whether we could slide some tables out to a gym or a foyer and so forth. Uh, to to advance some additional distancing and 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 do some creative things with the. Uh, the meals, uh, for example, just one piece where we've had some success giving tomorrow's breakfast today. Uh, and giving out supper in that grab and go. We're going to keep doing that. So you'll get tomorrow's breakfast today with supper as you leave the building uh after your day of school. Uh, so the the idea there being you can have breakfast at home in the morning, and we want up the clock up the cafeteria, you can grab a snack. In the morning, which is much more of a grab and go situation where you could just drop that in the, you know, the wrapper in the in the garbage as you go and not have to sit in the cafeteria per se. So we're doing those kind of logistical adjustments, but the PPE, the distancing, the hand washing plans. Um, the signage, all that will remain. So the expectation, of course, is that absent a uh confirmed medical diagnosis or or other uh leave under a variety of of protections. You you know, you're coming to work and and you're going to wear your PPE and and engage in all the the protocols and practices that have been outlined. Um, the the shot is available for you. We've made it as easy as possible to get it. Uh, again, thanks to Mayor and Governor's efforts, uh, we're right on the front line of that. Uh, we're hoping to get uh uh more vaccine this week than last, and then next week after that, more than that. Uh, and ideally, we'll get through our staff with the Johnson and Johnson shot that may be coming. Um, one dose versus two will allow us to get basically through fifty percent more people um um uh in in a week. Because they want to come back. Um, so those are all very promising signs, but if if um if I judge by feet uh voting. Um, they are signing up and they're coming to get uh the shot by and large.
And that that's great. And Will, uh, you know, obviously, we're going to have to just maintain protocol. And that's uh I guess what we can do and will do. Uh, so I appreciate that part. And I guess with HIPAA involved, right, we are we even going to necessarily know who did not get a shot, get the vaccine?
We've done a survey uh citywide through HR and basically asked folks if they wanted the shot, so we have that data by individual. Um, and we connect those dots where we can. So we do have a decent sense of uh who may not want it. Of course, they still could choose to get it and so forth. Um, that's also an evolving area. I mean, I think you've probably seen the news in other places. There's some thoughts out there. Do you should you carry that card with you if you're flying or this or that or the other? So we'll see what happens with that, and we'll certainly monitor that very closely. Uh, as a practical matter, though, uh, we in some sense de facto know who's gotten it. Um, because we're essentially helping run it. Um, but again, I think at the moment, it most people are getting it, but frankly, end of the day. Um, you know, while it's ninety five percent, uh, it's not a hundred percent, so we're still gonna. And what I was, the reason I was uh, you know, late tonight to the meeting, frankly, was I was on a call with our our medical team talking about, well, what protocols should be changed now? Um, if any, with respect to folks having the shot. Um, do they still need to isolate if they're in contact with a positive? If so, how long? Um, what are the criteria associated with that? Should we alter some of those protocols? So we are actively working on those pieces. Uh, as this evolution happens, and it's not just Will Clark or Tara Shaw. This is, you know, the doctors from St. Mary's. This is our medical doctor, Dr. O'Foskey. Our health department, Adam Rinco. That group gets together. We've got a Zoom tomorrow with Dr. Ruffin to talk about some of these logistics. And then we will make those adjustments with Scott Morgan, Juan Mendoza, Tara, myself, push that out to the union, get any feedback they have, any concerns they want to raise. Um, and then we will we will follow the science and we will follow those protocols and make the adjustments uh as we go.
That that's excellent. Um, Will and your team, uh, you gave me more confidence than I hear on the news, so thank you for that. Um, uh, and I and, you know, I I think it's uh, you know, uh, on the commissioners too, if we get any questions. Uh, this was great information that we could certainly share to say, uh, if it can be done, we're doing it. Uh, we're protecting uh staff, we're protecting students, um, and we're doing everything we can possible. Uh, with so many unknowns out there. So uh, Dr. Ruffin, you and your team on the on the COVID part of it. Uh, really have done an amazing job. Uh, things change every day. Uh, there's so many unknowns. Uh, but you guys really are doing a great job, and I appreciate what you're doing for our um our staff and our students. Thank you.
Commissioner Karen Harvey, your hand waving?
Thank you. Okay, um, Dr. Ruffin, um, well, first, let me just say this. Uh, that I uh had the pleasure of uh getting my shot two days ago. And I did go to Wham's, um, and I was very pleased with the operation. It was, there was a lot of walking. Um, but I, you know, I I I joked about uh, you know, being on the board for some sixteen years and going places in Wham's that I didn't even know existed. Uh, but uh nonetheless, everyone was very polite. Uh, there were folks directing you on where to go. Um, and it wasn't a lot of waiting. You just kind of moved along. So I thought, you know, I think everyone was very professional. Um, and so I'm very, very pleased, very proud of of that operation. So I just wanted to interject that. Um, so there is a, there is a question, um, however, that um. Some staff members asked me to ask, and I said that I would, and hopefully you can address this, Dr. Ruffin, and that is um that um. I think it was two days ago that our our teacher started receiving the the shot. Uh, and uh the shot that that I received and that they received uh requires a a second shot. So the question is, uh, why are we opening the schools for March fifteenth? Uh, when most of the teachers or the teachers have a a second shot to to receive. Um, so can you address that?
I can. Uh, we're opening schools because at the very beginning of the uh pandemic, and when we opened schools in September, we provided three options. One was what happens if we return in school full in person. Uh, what happens if we have a hybrid model, which will allow a virtual academy? And the other one is what happens when we have to go fully virtual because the pandemic and the data doesn't allow us to go back in school. We have been in hybrid model open five days a week since the very beginning of school in September. It was always with the goal that eventually we'd come back in school to some level with more people inside the school. Um, and and we were going to do that as time went on. Uh, when we decided to go full virtual uh due to increases in the pandemic. Uh, that was the best option to do at the time because of the increases uh throughout the state as well as in in Waterbury. And then we eventually returned in hybrid. Uh, and we returned in hybrid knowing that eventually we would come back uh with more. Hours during the school day. Uh, we always knew that we were going to try to do that. We didn't know exactly when. Uh, and through the committee that I meet with on a regular basis, uh, you know. The vaccine was definitely always brought to the table because it was important to us. But we didn't know whether educators were going to get the vaccine at all um during one B for a long period of time. It was still. Uh, you know, seventy five and older, and it was probably going to be sixty five and older. And then all of a sudden. We received this great news that the vaccine was going to be available. And and so on any given time. Even now, the previous conversation that we had is that some people are going to choose not to have the vaccine at all. And 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 everybody has to come to work eventually. And 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 everybody has to come to work eventually. And we have to open schools because that's the best thing for children and only the teacher can provide that. Uh, we have the added comfort of knowing that our educators are going to eventually have their vaccine if they want to. But it is not contingent upon everyone receiving their vaccine. The two shots are the one uh, from Johnson and Johnson before we open schools. And and so we're opening schools on March fifteenth based on that being the best decision for children and teaching and learning at this time. And knowing that eventually people who want the vaccine will be able to get it.
Okay. All right. So the next question is, um, you know, it's interesting, Will, you were talking about protocols and um, I'm throwing this question to to you and to Dr. Ruffin. Um, there was a question about the announce announcing uh, what cases uh there are in the schools. For example, I guess there was a something occurred in one school that they they found out that there were uh two or three people that you know, came down with the virus. So the comment was made that, oh, I did, we didn't know that. Maybe we should know that. Um, how are we handling, uh, we have announcements, we have reports that are giving on the given on the news about cases uh, occurring in the schools and we give reports on it. Is there any, um, thing that says that we can't, that those announcements can't be made in the school, um, in terms of how many cases, uh, there are?
Yeah, I could tell you, uh, Commissioner, it's a great question. Our our protocol has been and continues to be that we essentially have, uh, two tracks of of in internal notification, one for students and one for staff. Um, and we have a form. It's filled out by the supervisor of of that location, whether it's the department or the school for the staff and um, the school, uh, when it's a student. Uh, i- in both cases, um, we uh, refer and coordinate with the tracking tracing team and the health department to consult with reviews of 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 contacts and and whether we need to do additional isolations and so forth. The HR folks are engaged with our staff member as far as any kind of leave that's associated with it, remote work that may be approved, et cetera. On the um, on the student side, uh, it really involves close contacts, whether or not a classroom needs to go remote. Or if it's, uh, involves maybe athletic team or or et cetera. Um, so when those pieces to that puzzle happen, um, it also includes uh, communication that goes out to that school, uh, that there has been, um, uh, a case and that we're dealing with that and isolations are are being made, um, appropriately to the case. Obviously, you can't get involved in the individual names and things like that. So it's it's a bit of a generic statement, um, but that statement references that we are doing isolations, um, um, and quarantines as appropriate with the particular case. So we follow the CDC guidelines and work with our health department and trackers, tracers as far as going through that process. In some cases, frankly, we're able to do much of it in in-house just because principals and and teachers know uh, their classrooms and so forth, um, uh, and and basically can coordinate that with the tracker and phasers. In other cases, uh, frankly, they are bringing the information to us. Um, they have an adult who's who shows up on the system. They, through their tracking tracing, will ask them, do you have a minor child in the home? Uh, does that child go to school, et cetera? So we may hear it from them. That's kind of the third way it happens. They'll tell me us, usually through me or Sujata. Hey, you know, we have person X, they live at this address. Um, they're telling us that they have minor children that may be in the school system, but we couldn't get all the information and so forth. We can then track through Power School and figure out who that person is. Are there any kids in the home and do some investigation on that? That may mean that that kid's in contact who might have to be isolated. It could mean that there's further isolations in that room. Regardless, then communication goes out through the school, through parents where, um, uh, of of the positive case. So you know, I I'm sure there there have been times, uh, no question, based on the timing of the situation. Um, you know, that some balls may be dropped, but our endeavor is to push that out to the schools. I could tell you when it first started, uh, we were also doing communications out to the unions just to give them the heads up. Um, because of, I believe, the success of our consistency uh at the communication, we've actually teared that back and we just let it flow through, um, the department, division or the school. Um, because it's been pretty consistent. And I could tell you that I myself, which tends to get these complaints, have not heard back from those and, hey, we're not hearing about this. We're not, what's going on and so forth, because they are getting that message. Um, and and kudos to, uh, Sujata for helping us put those sort of forms together. So that's then shared, has been shared with the principals and training sessions and otherwise. So many of them, they already know what to do. They're just basically checking with us, hey, here's my situation. I got the notice. I've adjusted the dates. Is that okay type of thing? Um, some of them get unique and we might have to revise it. We'll talk to Cindy Vatone and and her folks, the health department, Adam Rinco to do that. Um, but generally speaking, that is the process. Um, and we do try to communicate out to that community, uh, in each instance, what happens, but also obviously are very respectful of the individuals' rights to, uh, covenant yield.
Right. Okay, so so is it a so that is that, so there is no harm in in a a principal making that announcement? That, oh, you know, we have reported two cases? For example.
Yeah, basically what happens is they're, uh, yeah, I'll paraphrase it, but it's essentially we've had a a a positive case in our in our school community. Um, we have addressed it with our partners and the tracking tracing team and made the appropriate, um, um, you know, isolations and so forth. And then that's that's kind of it. Folks have questions or concerns, they raise them back to that principal. Um, and I could, you know, I could give you a thousand stories of how that kind of stuff happens. But then we will deal with each of those. If someone's raised a concern, hey, I think I might have been impacted by this and it might have nothing to do with them and they're just concerned about it, but we'll go through those facts. In some cases, it may be, wow, we didn't think this, but geez, you were close with that person. Let's let's isolate you and figure this thing out. So you know, we try to communicate as best we can. I give kudos to the principals who are on the front lines, the school nurses in those isolation rooms. Getting that baseline information, react to coaches, athletic directors have done a great job. I mean, it's, that's a very difficult situation. You've got virtual kids, in-person kids. You know, a variety of things happening, um, and and, you know, it's literally a seven-day-a-week job. Um, and then I know Dr. Ruffin's phone mine, Sujata's, um, goes, uh, each of those seven days. But, you know, uh, everyone's on top of it from the school level, coach level, AD level. Uh, and our partners, it's a seven-day operation tracking tracing. So we could always talk to them and 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 make sure if we get into deep water, that we're talking to the health professionals.
Okay, thank you, Will. And lastly, um, there's just a request, uh, for uh, the principals or whoever is making the announcements uh, to remind, um, everyone to particularly the kids to or students to, you know, wear their masks, wash their hands, et cetera. Um, there were some schools that don't take advantage of that during announcements and there are others that do. So, um, I think if we keep reminding, um, you know, what the protocols are, you know, we'll be in a we'll be in pretty good shape. Okay, and that's all I have present down.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, our student representative, Leani Diaz, has a comment for the group.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say that I was in support of the transition to going to full on like a full day of six hours. Um, just wanted to say that, um, some of my peers have expressed their concern, um, regarding how much workload and how the workload would change for us, considering we've gotten so used to being four-hour days behind a screen and in person. Um, especially virtual students, I think it'll be a little more difficult for them to be in front of a screen for six hours. So, um, a lot of them have just expressed that concern about whether or not our workload would increase. Um, how fast our assignments would have to be turned in, um, things like that. I just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leani. And, um, we're not certain what exactly that's going to look like. Uh, so the first few days are going to perhaps bring about some questions that we didn't anticipate and maybe even some unintended consequences. But we are prepared to be, uh, to be responsive to them and to be responsive to our students and also be responsive to the fact that our teachers are going to be teaching both in person and virtually. And and some of our students now are going to be online, uh, all day long. And the the ones who are going to be in person, and you know, it could be less stressful for them. So we're going to be learning a lot, uh, especially at the very beginning of of March fifteenth and, um, perhaps, um, going back to the drawing board and and seeing what impact it has.
Thank you. We're moving on to agenda and item number four. The school reports with Noreen Buckley and Janice Efferson.
Commissioner, may I just add one more thing as they're setting up their their agendas? Um, I I just want to add that as we continue to to open, uh, the this, uh, for a full day. Uh, we're also going to be collectively meeting with the principals and with others to be able to talk about plans for not only just March, but April, May and June. Uh, and in that plan, we're also going to be discussing what graduation will look like this year. Uh, we know that it was definitely a trying time last year. We anticipate that with the current status of COVID and, uh, now with the vaccine and now with, um, more opportunities for opening places that we will collectively have a different plan. I'm not promising anything. All I'm saying is it looks like we're going to be able to move forward with something significantly different this year in a positive way than what we had last year. And I look forward to engaging in that conversation with our our principals as well as with their various graduation committees. Honors nights, programs, all of those things as the state continues to open up. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And, um, Noreen and Janice, the floor is yours. If you don't see me, that means I'm out stretching my back because my sciatica is killing me.
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, Commissioner. I'll try to keep this brief for the sake of time this evening. I hope that you've received our PowerPoints and I will go quickly through the slides. Uh, the next slide, please, but of course we posted our mission and vision and our core values and what drives our work. Next, the portrait of the graduate each and every day. The next two slides for myself as the Assistant Superintendent for the elementary schools. I also serve on, um, district committees that include SEL, the Little Cross Building Project. Next. Um, the extended academic support, we we are going to be calling it this year instead of summer school. And I can get into that more, but again, in the sake of interest of time, going to keep it brief. We have been reimagining summer school and we can again discuss that. The next, um, slide is simply a spreadsheet of our schools. Take note of the school improvement. Uh, grant schools, we ha- I have seven of them in the elementary. And I'd also like you to pay attention. We have four new leaders in our school this year. The next slide, please, is the, um, some of the vendors. Um, as you know, we have our extended school hours program. We're going on about twenty years in our district. And these are, um, the teachers continue to provide this instruction to students in a virtual setting after school. And of course, the students participate in some academic, targeted academic as well as some field trips. And as you can see, some of the vendors listed as well as the graphics. These, um, vendors continue to provide virtual field trips to our summer, to, excuse me, our children. Our next slide is, um, as you know, um, with this shortened day, our teachers have been providing professional learning and on these next two slides, we have the Google Educator Certification, our Kami. We have some stats there for you to review. Our next slide are also some of the, are the topics that the teachers continue to participate in. The expectation is that the administrator will facilitate and monitor and participate in the professional learning and to ensure that teachers are growing and learning in this time that is provided to them on a daily basis. Our next slide is, um, our chronic absenteeism. Uh, the green indicates our schools that have the lowest rates of chronic absenteeism. The blue are the schools that are really making gains and decreasing the levels of chronic absenteeism. And our last column indicates schools are still struggling and we work with them intensely and the schools are working very hard to decrease. And that will continue. And we're hoping with the reopening of school on March fifteenth, we'll see drastic improvements with those schools in their chronic absenteeism rate. Our next slide is our ELA, some strategies that the ELA department. I'm sorry, I'm I'm skipping a slide is the, um, our SEL, our elementary schools continue to participate and in SEL activities on a daily basis, very important during this time. And again, just a reminder, this is for in-person and virtual. Our teachers dedicate time to that component each and every day. The next slide, uh, next two slides, we have some information from our ELA department for our elementary schools. Um, we've had to make some adjustments, again, given the fact that we have students participating in in person as well as virtual environment. So you can review some of those. We've had adjusted schedules. We've repurposed some of our, um, reading interventions, some for our literacy facilitators in order to meet students in small group each and every day across the K through five spectrum. I've also included in the next slide some information from our I Ready. This is an instructional report that is swept once a week. This report is based on the week of February twenty-second. And as indicated, we have the per set the minutes that kids participate in I Ready. The expectation is a minimum of forty-five minutes and our schools are exceeding that. And again, if you have any questions about this, please feel free to contact me. Um, our we, there are magnet schools have, um, really increased their efforts to recruit this year, and this is a brief commercial, thirty seconds. Um, that was released on WFSB this year. And we did test the audio several times today. But technology never, never surprises. So.
Murphy's Law lives.
It was a great commercial and again, um. Everybody got a snippet? Thank you. We also, um, did an email blast to increase our recruitment efforts as well as a Facebook slide. Those are the next slide, please. Thank you. And our SIG schools um, are listed as well as in the professional development and supplementary programs and technology, the funds that were received through the SIG plant grant that has greatly helped us during this unusual time in the pandemic for teaching and learning. I've included in the next slide the principals that are in the initial cohort in twenty twenty, they'll be graduating. And we will begin another cohort in the fall of twenty twenty-one. Of twenty administrators. And our, this last slide is a tool that we've recently purchased, PairDeck, that allows teachers to have an interactive formative assessment with students that really gives them great information for the virtual learners. It are the students' understanding. And the last slide are, uh, schools continue to provide parent engagement activities on a monthly basis. These are not all of them. It is just a simply, um, spreadsheet to show you some of the different things that are occurring. And the last slides are just some visual graphics of some to captures what's happening in our schools. Each and every day, we continue and we are committed to continue to have our students learn. And we are so looking forward to returning to school on March fifteenth. So I hope I kept it to the five minutes that I was provided. And I thank you for your attention at this time.
Very nicely done. And you, uh, you actually had ten minutes, but, uh, we'll take it back. Don't worry. Uh, anybody have comments or questions? Uh, hold on, they changed the screen on me. I can't see who's what. I see Charles up there. Charles, the floor is yours. Unmute, you got unmute.
Okay, how's that?
You're beautiful there. Go for it.
On the absenteeism, um, you're talking absenteeism, I'm sure, about virtual also. And my question would be, when is a virtual student considered absent? Is because? Is because that person never signs in in the morning? Or does he sign in the morning and then disappear for the rest of the time? What are the guidelines for a virtual student to be absent?
Thank you. The the state did come out with some guidelines for how to track absenteeims this year, and there's several parts for virtual learning. The students have to sign in, log in, and if they log in late, of course, it has to go back and change the attendance. And some of our absenteeism is part of that virtual learners signing in late. And then it doesn't cut the teachers forget to or have already taken attendance. So that's part of the difficulty tracking the virtual. Also, it says that the students have to attend for half a day, must participate, have some contact with teachers through office hours and have evidence of completion of work. So if a student has all those four parts, they are considered in attendance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Noreen? I don't see anybody. Oh, Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Noreen, you Noreen, you mentioned the the magnet schools and and actually I said Doreen because she also did earlier with a number of students, you know, and how that goes for funding. We've in the past have had waterbury seats filled and out of town seats, some left vacant. Has there been any movement trying to progress whether or not we can utilize those seats? Are those still need to be left empty in case an out of waterbury student wants to come?
So your question, Commissioner, is to fill the seats with waterbury students?
Yeah, we talked about it last year, I believe, in one of our meetings, that when out of town students do not fill all their seats, are we able to backfill them with waterbury kids?
We are not because we have to really adhere to that percentage. So that being stated, that's why we really kind of amped up our recruitment efforts this year to make sure that we don't have empty seats so that when an out of district student chooses to leave the magnet schools, we go right to the net the student on the lottery that is available to attend.
Okay. So I I actually did see the commercials, very good commercial. So apparently, we're really targeting out of district students on that commercial because I don't think we have any city seats open.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, you know, maybe us as elected officials need to to push that a little better, you know, to assist you folks because any empty seat that can be filled should be filled. First off, we're spending a lot of money, you know, for a magnet type education. So if we could backfill in some waterbury students on out of district seats, I I I think we need to pursue that a little harder. So thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify some of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anybody else have a comment or question for Noreen? And please bear with me because I'm toggling between two screens. I don't see anybody raising their hand. So I'll pass the baton to Janice Efferson. You are on, you have the floor.
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, Commissioners and everyone on the panel tonight. Want to give you an update for the pre-K eights in the secondary school. And we'll start very quickly. Again, for the sake of time, you have all of this. And if you have questions, you can contact me and I'll be more than happy to to give you the answers. Our pre-K eights, as you know, have partnered with Boost, with Bridge to Success and Boost to become community schools. And this BTS was implemented this year as a reset, just to try to get everything boosted again, just to make sure that the new teachers and the new administrators were receiving the effective PD to start the year out. Not only did we have an opportunity to strengthen the reset by having professional development with BTS and Mr. Fernandez, we were also a part of the three-day Community School Fundamental Conference that took place in February. And the guiding question around the conference was, what does it mean to advance a culturally responsive, sustaining community school movement? So they had a lot of takeaways from that and we're hoping that we can bring that back to the schools and actually in our campuses as we say that we are community schools and we live up to that reputation. I'm just giving you a little data for the pre-K eights as we look at the academics for eighth grade math. If you can notice the numbers of students to grade levels below during the beginning of the year assessment, that number was decreased by fifteen percent in the middle of the year. And then we had a twenty-seven percent increase in the numbers of students who were performing at or above grade level. So we're proud of that and we're hoping that those scores continue to go in the direction that we need them to. If you look here, the seventh grade ELA showed evidence of moving a significant number of students up the scale with the approaching standard category being increased by eight percentage points. I won't go over this scale because Mrs. Buckley had just covered that. But I would like for you to notice that sixty-two percent of our students are meeting the minimum forty-five minute expectations of lesson time on task. Our pre-K eights have also been very fortunate to have our supervisor of CTE to gain some partnership with Amazon. And as we continue to focus on the characteristics of the portrait of the graduate, our Amazon has partnered with Project STEM and the Amazon Future Engineer Program will be in our pre-K eights in our middle schools. And the the students will take a class in sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade, therefore fulfilling the pathway for this particular partnership. So we're very proud of that. We're still using the funds and having activities under our Twenty First Century Grant. And as we shift over to our middle schools, we all know that our three comprehensive middle schools are members of the Commissioners Network. And we are proud to say that we have spent several dollars in addressing the audit review in selected Model E, which is actually for fronting the on the school with the amount of professional development that we need to to ensure that our kids are learning and the teachers are getting the the proper strategies to teach them. The work is centered around an if-then statement for our TACO. For example, we say if we develop and commit to turn around plans with research-based strategies into advanced talent, academics, culture and climate and operations, then schools, systems and performance will continue to grow. And these next two state slides are just slides showing you all of the professional development over the course of our Communitz Commissioners Network schools that we are using this year. And we did ask the teachers to give us some comments and some quotes about how they felt about the program and they did that. And so you can look at those on your slides. We are very happy to say that our eighth graders are in a district-wide partnership, participating in Gear Up, gaining early awareness readiness for undergraduate programs in conjunction with NBCC. Gear Up has provided a boot camp. We had sixty-seven students to participate in the boot camp before the PSAT that was given February the twenty-fourth. Gear Up has also provided swivel cameras and some technology for some of our eighth grade teachers in the schools who were not a part of the either the Commissioners Network or the SIG application grant. So we're very proud of that partnership. And then we will also do a district-wide eighth grade book study. And Joel Parker will be with us in the month of May. And that is also sponsored through Gear Up with NBCC. As we moved a little too fast right there. Okay, the three comprehensive middle schools have worked really hard to try to make sure that we are decreasing our chronic absenteeism rate. And we are proud to say that we had a decrease of over twenty percent in our chronic absenteeism. That's something to be braggadocious about. So they go from a forty-seven point thirty-six percent chronic absenteeism on day eight and they boasted a twenty, a twenty-six point three percent decrease. So we're very proud of them.
Good stuff.
Our high schools are not too far behind. They're doing really well. And as we continue to promote the portrait of a graduate, we have three hundred and sixty-five of our high school students who have enrolled to take at least one AP class this year. So we're very proud of our principals and our counselors who are making that happen. Kudos to Crosby High School, Willbe High School and Kennedy High School for being selected as Governor Lamont's FAFSA Challenge winners. And we also want to say congratulations to Willbe for increasing their FAFSA rates by twenty percent in the month of February and the state recognized that. I do want to brag on that page very quickly. I know we're out of time a lot, but our tenth graders and our twelfth grade did really well with the springboard, middle of the year assessment. So you can look at that into in details when you have a moment. We want to make sure that we still promote the 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 programs at our high schools that are doing really well. And we're using them definitely as recruiting tools. Willbe High School has the ADAMS Program and it stands for Advanced Technology of Math and Science. And then Crosby High School has the ACE Program Academic Choice of Excellence. And this year, they're going to increase the beginning cohort by at least fifteen to twenty students. They're actively recruiting as we speak and we're going to make sure that the program is successful. Crosby High School also, remember, has a partnership update with Post University. We're happy to say that all twenty students in cohort number one received all three credits the first semester and slated to receive six credits this semester and hopefully they'll have all nine credits. We're proud to announce that we have forty-four incoming students, so many that we have two cohorts in the in the fall instead of entering just one cohort. So we're very proud of that partnership. Kennedy High School, we all want to say that Crosby High School also had an increase in graduation rate from eighty-four percent to eighty-seven point four percent. I thought of that because Kennedy also had an increase in graduation rate. Kennedy went up from eighty-three point nine percent to eighty-six point six percent. Kennedy has our SOURS program, a school of academic renown. They have over a hundred and thirty students. The average SAT score was six hundred in math and six hundred and sixty for the reading and writing portion of the SAT. Want to brag a little bit on WHAMs. WHAMs, we know is known for our arts magnet school, but they are also taking pride in our career and technical education office, which includes everything you see on the slide and drone. I think that was meant has probably been the more exciting class that was entered this year, including the teacher preparation for special ed. Some of these are the classes that Mr. Albin and his staff are trying to strengthen kids into taking as we look at including some Yukon courses, just waiting on some approval for that. And the last slide that I want to go over very quickly is just giving a shout out to Career Academy for being number, the state said they're number three in the state at a seventy-eight point five, but we say we're number two and one because the other two schools ahead of us only have fifty or less graduates and Career has two hundred and fifty-five for being number three in the state for completing the FAFSA. Another bright spot, Career and Middle School, Career and Waterbury Arts Magnet Middle and High School are doing really well with their chronic absenteeism rate. They're the lowest in the district. The last slide I wanted to just to share with you is from the alternative ed schools. We are doing really well. Enlightenment has almost seventy percent of their seniors who have finished and completed the FAFSA. And the Nissel Cohort, like Mrs. Buckley said, is up and running and we're graduating in May. And we will, we will be inviting you all to that graduation. And that's just the leadership that we have spent the two days for the last twelve months, almost, trying to complete and just giving leadership to our principals. We're really excited about everything that's going on in elementary and secondary. And if you have questions, I know we're, we've been here a long time. So you can just email me those and I'll answer them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Efferson, thank you. Anyone have questions for Janice? I don't see anybody raising their hands. Okay, Janice, we're going to move on, but thank you very much. Our next agenda item is item number five. This says Juan Mendoza is Juan here. I didn't see him here.
No, it's Jessica Ocasio will be presenting on behalf of Juan in the Human Capital Department.
Okay, Jessica, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. As I mentioned, I'll be presenting on behalf of Juan Mendoza in the Human Capital Department with item number five, request approval of the Student Teacher Practicum Affiliation Agreement with the ARC for the ARC Certification Student Practicum Placement Program. ARC is an approved alternative educator preparation program and it's operated by the Office of Higher Education with the State Board of Education. This is a three-year contract with the option to extend for an additional three years and is at no cost to the city or Board of Education. The cooperating teachers do earn a stipend for their work with being a mentor for the student teacher. However, this is paid for by the Alternative Educator Preparation Program itself. ARC is an accelerated hybrid program for highly motivated adults who wish to either enter the teaching profession. And it's an excellent option for our non-certified staff and community members. We actually had ARC come in in the beginning of the school year to provide an info session, info session, sorry, for our non-certified staff to participate and listen in to see if it's a program that they're interested in participating. And so this would be a great grow your own initiative for our district.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions or comments for Jessica? For the record, Liz Brown is applauding you, so just be forewarned. No questions, no comments. Thank you very much, Jessica. We'll move on to the next item, item number six. Darren Schwartz, I think you are the person du jour and responsible for this agenda item.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President, Board of Education. Tonight, coming in front of you to request approval of a fifteen thousand dollar amendment to the school readiness QE grant that we came to you earlier in the year. We we originally allocated twenty-seven thousand two hundred from that grant to go to Easter Seals B C B A services. Unfortunately, they could not deliver on that on that contract. And so we had to adjust and we have thankfully worked with Family and Children's Aid to be able to provide similar services for fifteen thousand dollars for the remainder of the year to provide behavioral services for our community partners and sites. The remaining twelve thousand two hundred is yet to be voted on by the council. But tonight, I'm requesting that that change to be to be approved.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Darren? Seeing nobody waving. Darren, I think the next item is yours also.
I don't remember. I've got four more there, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep it quick here.
All right, you go for it.
All right, the next is a is a is a request for a contract with Waterford Country School. This is a special ed programming. It's a three-year contract for the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-nine and forty-five cents.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? All right, I don't see anybody looking for attention. So Darren, continue going.
Let's see if I put my papers together correctly. The next, I believe, is there is a is a contract, three-year contract with Southern. As you know, we work with Southern in many different areas for graduate students, psychology, for example, and speech and language pathology. This would be a contract for three years to allow graduate students to work in our system, earn, earn, earn some, earn some stripes and then hopefully recruit some of their best talent to come here to Waterbury.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions or comments? I don't see anybody waving their hands, so we'll move on to the next one. Darren, thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Pagano, on the call. on the call here. If you have any questions or if you want to jump in is Mike Marotti, our CTE supervisor, and Louise Allen Brown, who is our very talented grant writer. We're coming tonight to, to, uh, request, uh, uh, an opportunity to apply for twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars to, uh, enhance our, our Perkins Grant, uh, for grade six to twelve. This would be due April first. This just came out from the State Department of Education. They're, they're calling it a special populations, recruitment retention grant. We're still, uh, we're still looking at how to exactly apply this grant. This just came out. And so, uh, requesting approval tonight to apply, and obviously would be coming back with details after we do so.
Thank you. Anybody got questions, comments? All right, let's move on to the next one then, please.
Hey, in the similar vein, we have a financial literacy statewide grant. I believe these grants came out in the same day, both due April first. This would be targeting for middle, middle schools, fifteen thousand dollars to fund financial literacy programs. That would feed right into the pathways that we're establishing here in the district. And I know, uh, you know, in an email to, to Mike Marotti, Louise found these grants, uh, because she's great at finding these, and, uh, I don't think it took very long for Mike to reply back that, yes, we want to get these. And so, he's taking every grant we can to, to help supplement our programming, and we're looking for, uh, permission tonight to apply for this as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Louisa, Mike, thank you for joining us. Get all the money that we could get. All right, Darren, thank you very much. Next item is number eleven. Will Clark, request approval of a construction contract with Eskimo Mechanical.
Again, Commissioners, this is, uh, this contract is for boiler replacements over at Walsh. This would actually be, uh, to replace, uh, both boilers over there. Uh, essentially, we're taking a page out of the old Dresko project, and we went, uh, ahead and, uh, based on the life cycle and, um, maintenance issues related to the boilers there, determined that replacement was necessary, put together the specs. This was the low responsible bidder as determined through our facilities department and our consultant, and we ask your approval to, um, proceed with this, uh, contract and to engage in this replacement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Will? Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand waving.
Yes. Well, just, just a thought, uh, when we replace the boiler, is that an opportunity to do any other updates with the ESER money concerning HVAC or anything? Or is that, is that apples and oranges?
It's a great point, Liz. This one was already in the works. You're going to see a number of other projects coming down the pike, uh, related to HVAC. Some in the, based on the Alliance Bond Grant, the two million dollars we got, uh, a few months ago. We actually have a couple of boilers in there that were going through the RFP process right now. Those should be posted soon, and then we'll be back to you on, on those. And, um, to your point, as the ESER money coming in, that application process is still, uh, going through, but there will definitely be some additional HVAC items. Essentially, some things that fell off of our capital wishlist will fit nicely into the ESER, uh, spend.
Okay, thank you.
We will be back on more boilers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, did I see your hand waving?
You did. I just wanted to say thank you very much for, uh, getting these boilers for Walsh School, and anything else that you can get for Walsh School would be greatly appreciated, Will.
The gym floor.
Oh, that would be great.
It's coming.
Thank you.
Send the Alliance Bond Grant. We'll be, we'll be back on a couple of Walsh projects that, that we hope to get going this summer.
Commissioner Karen Harvey, did I see your hand waving?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Will, when we replace the boilers, I'm very glad to hear this, is that going to be done during schooltime?
Short answer is no, uh, but the long answer is, uh, you know, depending upon when we get the approval on the contract, uh, we'll be able to, uh, figure out the exact scope and sequence. It'll be post, uh, heating season, um, but must, all the work we generally do with these folks, uh, is off-school hours. They may be in there doing some work during school hours, but that's, uh, going to be limited to, to not have any, uh, impact on, you know, that's going to cause any sound and things like that. So, generally speaking, they'll work second shift, uh, weekends and over breaks and take advantage of, of summer and that type of thing, but, uh, they're very sensitive to that, and that was certainly pieces of the RFP that we controlled the schedule.
All right, so the, the last question, um, I'm, I'm assuming we're anticipating asbestos, uh, removal when we do this?
All, all part of the bid process, so, uh, they are responsible for all of that, including, uh, the notices and as needed, when any type of that work might need to happen, with no one in the building, uh, they would do that. I think this area is actually, given the renovations that have happened at that school previously, it's not as big of a concern if it might have been, say, at St. Peter and Paul, when we do that boiler, that there, there's going to be some, uh, significant remediation once you get that big tank out of there. Walsh, not as bad, but it's, it's part of the RP that they have to do all the environmental elements and manage all that, and Chris Harmon and his team will be looking over their shoulder, uh, every step of the way.
All right, and, and just, uh, you know, I know you'll be back to us regarding this, but just to make sure that we're not leaving anything, um, out, um, in the, um, front of the school where the disposable stuff is and etc., because the kids play there a lot, um, so that that, whatever has to be removed is removed from this, from the school. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, uh, that is part of it as well. And as you well know, with the, uh, maintainer two over there, uh, he wouldn't let us do that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Will? All right, Will, you have the next lot, you have the next agenda item also with, uh, with Stanley Security.
Yes, this is just an amendment to the existing contract. This is for our, uh, security systems. This actually allows us to, uh, um, uh, update and connect with our larger system at St. P- uh, St. Peter and Paul, the Beechworth Street address and the convent. Uh, we have some temporary security, uh, measures over there now, where we're sort of piggybacking off of, uh, what the church had, and that was part of the closing pieces. But we want to put it on our system. Will and his team have put some cameras over there that we're able to monitor. We have some other security elements that we put in, but this would officially add it to the Stanley contract. We're also adding a little bit to the contingency because we've added a few other pieces since this contract has started, so it gives us a little bit of repair and maintenance bubble, uh, if we need it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Will on this one? All right, thank you very much. Next agenda item, Doreen Biola, I believe, is, uh, on tap for, uh, January monthly expenditure. And I will, I will be right back with you. I got to go attend to a difference end of the house. Thanks.
Thank you, President Pagano. Good evening again, Commissioners. This is an FYI to the board. This is our, um, monthly expenditure status through January. Just quickly, I'll go through, um, you know, you'll see that we're surplusing, um, in some of the, um, salary line items. A lot of that is due to vacancies, attrition. And you're going to be noticing that we have some savings in other line items due to, a lot of it is, some of it is due to COVID. But on the last page, you're going to see that we're putting those funds towards, um, the sinking fund line item. Again, that is, the intent of that is to help, um, budget for some of our capital projects. That is very, um, difficult for the city to provide, um, the capital funding to us, so we're trying to build that up. Will and his team, um, have gone to great lengths in developing plans and, and the operations, technology, and so on. So, there's many projects and plans, um, that we like to do, and that's how we're building that line item, um, as much as we can. And you'll also notice that we're not touching the contingency lines and the surplus lines as that can still be used to offset the fiscal year twenty-two budget. So, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Doreen? I don't see anybody's hand waving. So, Doreen, I think you did an A plus. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our next item is item number fourteen, Committee on Policy and Legislation. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pagano. Dr. Ruffin had alerted the board, um, to a potential situation with the governor's current proposed budget. You may recall that, um, the legislature and the, um, State Board of Education had promised, um, districts that they, um, had rewritten, first of all, the formula for the ECS funding, and that they were actually going to accelerate instituting that into the ECS formula over the next several years. There were two increases, um, here that, um, were, are supposed to go into effect in the biennium, um, that the governor has now withdrawn. So, we had an expectation of, um, something in the area of nineteen point nine million dollars to come to us over the biennium that we are not now going to see. So, when we look at, um, some of our expectations going forward, some of the, um, programming and, um, improvements, um, for students that we were going to do, we may not be able to do that because we were expecting this money. So, this is a, um, statement from the board that would go to all of our, um, state delegation and in a separate letter to the governor, um, requesting that they reinstitute that money. Remember that Waterbury already is currently the most underfunded district under ECS. And this exasperates that, and on top of it, it is the largest cut for, um, of all the districts in Connecticut, the largest cut. So, we're already underfunded, and now we're going to take some more away. So, we, as one voice, um, of Board of Education, would make this statement again to our state delegation and to the, to the governor as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Any comments or questions for her? Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand.
I just wanted to mention also that there is a public hearing on the education budget on Tuesday, and it might be appropriate to, uh, send this in as testimony because it's great and appreciate all the work you did, Anne, on this, because I think it's good to, for the whole committee to hear this, not just our own legislators. Joan Hartley is the vice chair of the committee, of the Approves Committee, and, uh, Representative Reyes does sit on the committee, so I think we have some strong advocates, but I, we might consider doing that as well, just sending to the testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, did I see your hand wave?
You did, Mr. President. Thank you, and through you. You know, it's interesting, um, you know, I've been asking a lot of questions about, especially our grant money, considering we already have, uh, three hundred million dollars coming to us, uh, between grant and operating budget. So, you know, I guess we're going to send this as a board. Uh, I don't know if it's going to actually have a vote as to whether we send it, um, but without a complete understanding of what we do with the money we do have, I'm not particularly in favor of going and chasing the governor for, uh, more money. And I know it, it, there's a factor there that is, uh, has not been correct for a number of years, not just this year. But I really like to know what we're doing with the money we do have, uh, before we necessarily go, uh, complaining that we're not getting more. So, I'm not sure how this letter's going out. I don't know if the board's going to vote on it at the next meeting. I'm not necessarily in favor, um, but whatever the board decides, it's what we do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Karen Harvey, did I see your hand wave?
Yes, you did. Thank you, President Pagano. Yeah, I too, um, kind of have to echo what, uh, Commissioner Van Stone is saying because, number one, um, you know, the elephant in the room when we send this is, uh, oh, wait a minute, you know, how much money? What about the, the ESER funds? Aren't you getting that? And if we're going to send something, I, I think what you, what you said, Anne, was about different things, what it affects, what it, what will be affected. So, um, I would like to see that in, in this. It, you know, it's, it's different when you just say, in general, oh, this is going to affect us, this, we know that. What is it going to affect? But I, I just kind of, you know, going back and forth with this because the, the, first of all, I think the whole board should have, um, had something, uh, to say about what the plan would be to address this, uh, with our, with our legislators. And, and then, um, I also expressed concern about who should be included in on it. I thought, um, you know, um, financial should have been something, you know, in, you know, you know, included in the plans. But I think, uh, again, I would like to see, you know, the big elephant in the room is, oh, wait a minute, aren't you getting, you know, these other funds? Okay, so, you know, what's going on here? So, you know, if you could address that, or maybe, uh, you know, I know, I know that question's going to be asked, so I just wanted to interject that. Thank you, President Tom.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney, do you have any response to those questions?
So, the, um, ESER funds cannot be supplanted. The federal government has made that very clear. And so, that would be the response to that, should the state come back to us and say that. There, um, CAEB has also come out, um, and, um, stated quite clearly, and I believe Liz sent that testimony the other day, quite clearly, um, that they, they want this, um, this funding reinstated for all districts, um, across the state. So, in particular, the alliance districts are impacted. There are actually some non-alliance districts that actually saw an increase when they, again, backed off on their promise, um, to accelerate fixing the ECS formula. So, um, it is not unusual, um, for, um, the policy and legislative to put forward a request for a, um, statement such as this. It is not, it doesn't usually come to the board first. What it does is it goes to policy and legislation. We propose something, it goes to workshop, and then from workshop, it goes to the voting meeting. So, it, the, the opportunity for, um, the board commissioners to address the advocacy is there. It's at workshop, and it's again at the board meeting. And again, this is not unusual that it comes in this fashion. We see something that needs advocacy. That's what the legislative committee does, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Dr. Ruffin, I see your hand.
Yes, and, and thank you. And I certainly hope I'm not out of order to be able to make some comments here. Yes, Waterbury Public Schools receives quite a large sum of money in grants. Those grants are written for specific purposes, and they cannot be used to be, to take care of the general business that Waterbury Public Schools needs to have. In addition to Waterbury Public Schools being underfunded and having been underfunded for many years, public education period, it is critically important that the board and everyone understands that to lose alliance funding and to lose ECS funding significantly places this entire district in jeopardy. To think that we potentially could lose nineteen million dollars[1743.28] To think that we potentially could lose nineteen million dollars over a two-year period with a flat-funded budget, I believe that all boards in the state of Connecticut must be supporters of the alliance school districts because in the absence of alliance funding, alliance of an increase in our ECS, we are dependent upon grants that cannot be spent to maintain this district. Grants don't help you maintain a school district for the purposes of doing business. They help you to be able to do things that are earmarked for grants the way that they are written, and they come anywhere from federal to state grants to local grants. You cannot use grants to keep this district afloat. You cannot use the forty-one million dollars to keep this district afloat because if you do that, then you will be supplanting and we are subject to federal rules and guidelines. While this forty-one million dollars is a wonderful opportunity for ESRA to impact our school district, we cannot rely on ESRA funds because it is a one-time funding. It may never come again. And when it does, or if it never comes again, because it's, we were told it's not coming to you again. If we use that to sustain this district, then we are very much limited as to what we could do because if we use it to operate in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and that money is gone and we don't advocate for our ECS money, we are going to end up being a disservice to the students in this district because now we're talking real inequity.
Thank you for the clarity. Commissioner Harvey?
So my point here, again, is that, well, two things. One is that when we present this to the state, why don't we include that, what this will affect? We support, or we don't support, or we do support, whatever, but why don't we include that in the letter? This is what will be affected without these funds, is my question. Why don't we include that in the letter? Give the letter a little bit more teeth, is my comment. Secondly is in regards to how or advocacy, the whole board advocates for this. And my question was, the email was sent to the whole board. So it should have come before the whole board or discussion. This affects, as the superintendent just mentioned, how severe this is. So, you know, we have it now, but it should have come before us. It's not that it's odd for it and that the legislative committee advocates, but we all advocate. So, you know, I'm just saying, you know, let's work together on this because this is very, very serious. So again, I think we should put a little bit more teeth in this letter that we're sending, and that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Look, I agree totally that we need to go get the funding we need to run this district. And certainly I'm extremely aware of how grants work and their limitations or boundaries to how the money gets spent. But keep in mind, over the years, we've gotten pretty creative with the alliance grant to actually pay numerous salaries that are on the highest pay scale we have. So, you know, if we can get creative enough to do that, we can be creative enough to utilize the funds we do get. And we're not doing anything improper. But again, a number of our cabinet positions, et cetera, are paid for by alliance. If you notice, you will not see them in the operating budget, and that's where the money comes from. So, you know, I'm not really arguing that the alliance grant is one of our best, RECS, and the factoring is, you know, out of whack. There are a lot of reasons for that. The smaller towns also have all the power when they go to Hartford. And unless our delegation speaks up, which even at our legislative breakfast or dinner, depending on what year we had one, they're the ones that are not doing the job in Hartford. I feel as commissioners, we have, we look at the budget the best we can, and we make do with the money that comes to us. So until we really scrutinize how we spend alliance, I don't think we necessarily should be looking at others to give us more. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ann Sweeney, I see your hand.
So Dr. Ruffin makes a very important point here. Again, they are not funding our ECS the way they promised us to. That is our biggest pool of money for general fund expenses for our day-to-day operations. To not have that fully funded means we have to go to the taxpayers of the city, and we have already been told at the city level that we are going to be flat-funded. So I don't know where we would get the money for the general operations that this district needs. It comes from ECS. Yes, they eliminated the alliance. You have to understand how the alliance works. The ECS formula is applied. If we get a year-over-year increase because of the way the formula is applied, that increase is withheld in all the alliance funds. And then they tell us how we can, we have to apply to spend that. What they have done over the biennium is said, this is what your ECS would have been, and we're not going to give it to you. So under the formulary, they have said that we should get nineteen point nine million dollars more over the biennium, and they said, we're not going to give it to you. So we start out severely underfunded under the current ECS formula, and then when they try to fix it, they say, we're not going to give it to you. And again, this is the largest portion of money that pays for general fund expenses. So that's a, as we know, that's your teacher salaries, that's your health insurance. All those expenses, those fixed expenses that we can't just do away with, we have to find a way to pay for them. So again, I asked at the committee level for anyone who had some suggestions for language for this letter. I got nothing, so I drafted what I drafted. I do make a point of saying that it will hurt students. I do make a point of saying that it will be a strain on city resources and taxpayers. It's in there. Make it very clear that this is a serious situation for Waterbury, and we need them to listen up and to advocate for us. So unless somebody else has got some language you want to suggest to put in there, I'm happy to do that. But this is what we have right now. We also have, this has to come before the board. I know Liz would like to see that before appropriations, but this is what we designated for these type of issues, that legislative committee would bring it to workshop, and then it would go to the regular board meeting. And that's not going to happen in time for that appropriations committee. So it will be after the board meeting that we can even send this off to our legislators because that's our process.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Commissioner Rocco Orso, did I see your hand up?
Yes, sir. My comment is that this appropriation committee meeting is next week, correct? And if they don't hear anything from us, they're going to think Waterbury cares that we're losing nineteen million dollars. We have to do something. We have to go to the next board meeting, add some more teeth, let's do something. We have to do something. We just can't sit back and lose nineteen million dollars. And if this meeting is next week, let's send them something. If you want to put some more teeth into it, go ahead. But we've got to send them something because they're going to think that Waterbury doesn't care. And Waterbury cares. We care about the students, we care about the nineteen million dollars we're going to lose. All this semantics I'm hearing is driving me crazy. I'm sorry to lose my temper, but we have to do something. And now, not next week, not two weeks for our next meeting, now, the meeting is next week, they have to hear from Waterbury. Thank you.
Agreed.
I absolutely agree.
I agree with Rocco also. We can't just let it wait. We need to let them know that losing nineteen million dollars is truly, truly going to hurt the city of Waterbury. And they need to know that now. If we send a letter this week, next week, the week after, two weeks after, after our meeting, whenever we do it, let's just do it to let them know that we are concerned about our students, that we need the money, and to take it away from us after we are always being underfunded is just ridiculous. They need to hear from Waterbury. They need to hear from us now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm in total agreement with what you and Rocco have said and what Liz has said. Anybody else have any other comments? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. You want to add on any more last comments?
So then, hearing that, I would, at this point, request the board's the board's permission to at least read it at appropriations, given the comments that I've heard.
I'm good with it.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I do not. And we don't typically take votes at workshops.
Right. This is, I think we could, we could have a parliamentary issue and just, it's not a, we could waive our original process by a vote and vote on this, what Ann was talking about.
Commissioner Van Stone, I see your hand up.
That's a great point, however, with the way we typically vote, what difference does it make? You guys want to send it out, send it out.
All right.
All right. Commissioner Charles Stango?
Thank you. I think it's not a formal vote, we don't have to worry about anything we're shouting out. I agree, I agree, I don't agree. It's not a vote. You'll get a sense of the feeling.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ann Sweeney, I see your hand.
Sure. So I make a motion to send the draft letter to the appropriations committee on the, on March ninth. Second.
All in favor?
Well, we're voting on whether to allow a motion.
I didn't hear that.
We're voting to allow a motion, not to send it.
No, I made a motion, I made a motion to forward the letter to appropriations committee on the night.
All right, I'm going to vote no with a big protest that we shouldn't be voting at a workshop.
Workshop is a committee of the whole. A committee meeting, just like any other committee meeting, you can vote. We have not traditionally done that. We have a timeline here. Several members of the committee of the whole have expressed a desire to meet that timeline and have this right before appropriations.
Fine, I vote no, take your vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Duly noted.
Opposed, also, no.
Okay. Everybody else is an aye? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ann. You'll send that and transmit it accordingly?
Yep, I will, I will check the appropriations and see if I can actually get on the agenda to read it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next agenda item. Where are we? Number fifteen. Attorney Shaw, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pragano, and good evening again, commissioners. Actually, agenda items fifteen and sixteen are, should be discussed together. But currently, the board does not have a specific title and policy for students, only staff, even though one is required by law. There were recent final rules that were developed and published by the Office of Civil Rights. The board currently does have policy number five-one-four-five-point-six, which states that the district will have a student Title IX coordinator and states that there will be a complaint grievance process as required under Title IX, but there is no current Title IX policy for students. So what I have drafted here is policy, revised policy four thousand point one, which is the staff time policy, and a new policy, five-one-four-five-four, which would be a student Title IX policy. Those two policies are identical. And we have revised a number of documents, or in the process of revising a number of documents that are required to be published on our website, that will be part of the district's schedule. But with respect to the policies themselves, fairly straightforward. They offer what Title IX is about, an anti-discrimination statute based on gender, and provide some definitions, and then directs anyone reading to the district's website to find the complaint form and then the guidelines and so on.
Thank you, Attorney Shaw. Any questions and or comments? Seeing no one waving their hand, thank you, we're going to move on. Next item is number seventeen. Commissioner Sweeney and Attorney Shaw is on the policy and legislation for revised proposed policies.
Thank you, President Pragano. At this time, I would motion to postpone this item, item seventeen, until the April first workshop.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Sweeney?
President Pragano, given the late hour and the importance of all of this to all the commissioners, I want to make sure that they have sufficient time and don't feel rushed in vetting this. So at this point in time, I'm making that recommendation that we postpone.
Okay, thank you. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone, your hand up?
Yes, you offered comments, right? Yeah, you know, I'm okay with that. I did have quite a few questions for this committee on a number of these items. So I'm okay with doing that, but we do need to spend the time, you know, because there are certain things in here that I struggle with on how they came out, and I'm only going by the minutes. So I'm fine with moving it forward to another workshop, but we definitely need to talk about this before it's enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Karen Harvey, are you waving your hand?
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure I unmute myself.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with, I agree, we have to spend some time on this. My only question, however, is, I think there's three, what were the steps, Ann? Weren't there three? Could you go through that, what the steps are when we do the bylaws? In terms of input, et cetera?
Well, it has to have what they call two reads. So we accomplished that by vetting it at workshop, and then it comes to the regular board meeting off of consent so that people have the opportunity to vet it further, make further comment.
All right, so this through the chair, so this would just simply, if we move it to April, would be that still that second? Would be the second review, the second time we review it, or?
No, this would, for these, April first would be the first review.
Okay.
And that, yeah, and then fourteen days later at regular meeting, we would vote on it off of consent.
Got it, okay. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Everybody's good? Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney and Attorney Shaw.
You need to take a vote.
What is the vote for?
To move it to April.
Postpone, postpone item seventeen until April first.
All right.
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it, just, okay, don't.
Who's that?
I think that's Liz on the phone. We're making a motion, then? Who's going to make the motion?
I made the motion.
Who wants a second?
I seconded it already.
All right, all in favor, any more discussion? All in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay.
The next item is the superintendent's notification. The next item is the superintendent's notification to the board. Dr. Ruffin?
It's all there.
Yep.
All right. And with that in play, we're going to executive session, I believe?
Correct.
Commissioner Sweeney, may you do the honors?
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We're moving into executive session. Will Zuda? You're going to? Commissioner Sweeney, would you do the honors, please?
Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Comments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Say no. Good. We're all smart. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.